Hi, Chris.
Hello.
Congratulations on getting the Chromebooks in.
Oh, yeah, no kidding. That was Hugo, hold on one second. I'll be right with you. Hi, Joanne.
So today. May not have to. They say it seems to think they'll get through it.
Okay. Hugo, go ahead and pause recording. You should have that on your Zoom control to pause it.
Hi.
All right. Let me, let me make sure our recording is going. Hugo, can you please start the recording? Okay, all set.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the virtual regular board meeting, but no, I'm gonna start over. I'd like to call to order the virtual regular Board of Education meeting on Thursday, May 28, 2020, at 6:34 PM. Gail, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
Here.
Mr. Isley?
Here.
Mr. Martieri?
Here.
Ms. Harris? Oh, she's not here yet. Dr. Moore?
Here.
And Ms. Spivey?
Here.
Thank you.
So I move to enter closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, or legal counsel for the district, and independent contractors and specific volunteers, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the meeting minutes. The placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students, discussion of lawfully closed meeting minutes, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes, is mandated. Is there a second?
Second.
Gail, could you call the roll, please?
And that was Mr. Kowski?
It was me, Matt Barron.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Martieri?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Spivey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we all now go to the closed session room.
That is correct, and I'll be spinning that up now. Okay, Hugo, go ahead and stop recording on the webinar. Pause it, I should say.
So our next item is introductory reports.
Don't we have to do public comments?
I had that after introductory reports, but we can do it before.
Okay. Okay, I'm ready. So Ms. Camerton, would you give the status of the FOIA requests?
Yes, there were seven FOIA requests and six have been resolved.
Thank you. I don't have any superintendent announcements at this point, except that we are waiting for guidance from ISVIE as we continue to move forward and plan for the 2021 school year.
Thank you. And Gail, are there public comments?
Yes, there are. The first one was from Monica Sheehan. She says, "Good evening. I have three questions relating to tonight's agenda item 6C, Project One budget update, and respectfully request an email response from the board to these three questions. What specifically is the reason for the 7.3 million increase in the project since the September 20 receptional estimate of 37.2 million? This estimate released in September was already 4.6 million higher than the original estimate of 32.6 million. Number two, it's concerning that proposed cuts to Project One include 25% of the classrooms, the ADA elevator, and all the all-gender bathrooms. Where is the 20 million that the superintendent asked the board to set aside in December 2018 for urgent needs in Project Two, primarily for the pool and auditorium? Will this 20 million be spent on the academic and special education facility needs in Project One instead? Number three, according to the minutes of the 12/2018 District 200 General Meeting, Superintendent Pruitt Adams is to propose a funding plan for urgent facility items in Project Two, including the pool and auditorium, no later than the May 2020 General Board meeting. Yet the item is not listed in tonight's agenda. If the funding plan has already been proposed, where can it be accessed on the school's website? If the funding plan hasn't been proposed, when will it be? Thank you. Then Deana Herman provided the following. "Hello, Board. In reviewing the documents for tonight, I saw potential reductions in scope in work in Project One, which include a potential loss of an elevator in the north end of the building and reconsideration of the work in the sped team area. While we can understand the need to keep within a budget, I ask that you thoughtfully review what you are considering cutting. When budgets get tight, often the things to go are accessibility upgrades, and it shows in the current condition of Oak Park River Forest High School. With regards to the original construction plan, it appears to only have had a north elevator that was going to be the only ADA accessible elevator in the building. After much discussion, as an additional elevator was added to the plans in the new construction space of the cafeteria slash student common area, it appears you may be considering not installing the elevator in the north end. In a school of this size and with a considerable number of students, faculty, and staff needing to use the elevators, this seems like a bad plan. The current elevator that serves the north side is slow, small, and multiple students use it. Should there be a return to school with physical distancing measures in place due to COVID, having less options to travel to floors becomes a bigger barrier, barrier to accessing educational spaces. Also for the discussion is the work in the sped team room. It seems like the Imagine Team identified this as an area early on that needed updating as it doesn't even have an accessible bathroom. Cutting upgrades in this space also seems problematic. Oak Park River Forest High School is the only high school for two wealthy communities, and the lack of access in the school is problematic. We don't know the full extent because the accessibility study has not been released. Please put the full study up on the website. It's been many, many months since it was done. I also encourage you to hire that ADA coordinator. Lest we think physicals access is a disability issue, taking away gender toilet rooms affects all students, disabled and not. What is the plan for students who need these rooms? We've heard and encouraged the district's aim equity and excellence through access for all in achieving the goals of the strategic plan. It's time to make sure you live up to this vision you have been promoting to our community. If not, it becomes clear you are content with perpetuating inequities in our systems, continually continuing to fail some of these kids. Thank you for your consideration." From John Phelan, "Thank you for the opportunity to offer public comment. I comment tonight to urge the board to postpone Imagine OPRF Project One. The present financial environment has been severely soured by the sudden historic COVID-19 pandemic. As a result of this plague, tens of thousands of Americans have lost their lives and tens of millions lost their livelihoods. Businesses both small and iconic are closing their doors forever. State and local governments across the country are braced for financial challenges we have not seen in our lifetimes, and our communities of Oak Park and River Forest face the same challenges. During difficult times, it is important to look on our communities as towns with neighbors rather than cities with residents. By this, I mean that our local government entities need to look outside of their silos and work with their sister governing bodies to see how they can join forces to help residents and businesses. The state of Illinois is near operational in solvency. The villages of Oak Park and River Forest are looking at hard times. Revenue shortfalls await that will lead to inevitably to tax increases. Such increases at a time when unemployment has surged to record levels can be the tipping point for many residents who are struggling to survive. Last month, the board voted to move ahead with Project One despite the warning of its financial advisors. On tonight's agenda, you are presented with a 9% increase in the cost of Project One, adding another 4.5 million of taxpayer money to the more than 32 million cost of the project. Last month, you decided to pay for Project One from your fund balance, money that was taken from taxpayers opportunistically two decades ago and which the district has been seeking to spend in a responsible way since that time. As you debated at last month's meeting, the excessive fund balance has been an albatross around the neck of the district for many years, and part of the motivation for moving forward with Project One articulated by several board members last month was to be rid of this burden. However, the times we face right now are dire. People are hurting and frightened. If many are not desperate now, they soon will be, regardless of whether the state gets additional federal funds. This is also true for small business owners, landlords, and the vendors that rely upon them to succeed. Hold the money for now and see what comes next. Perhaps the district can offer tax relief coordinated with our village's tax increases that will save many businesses, residents, and building owners from ruin. Perhaps the district will need the money to preserve its own excellent educational opportunities if the predictions of your advisors come true and the state cuts educational funding and burdens local districts with unfunded pension obligations. Perhaps America will weather these times, and the day will come when Project One can move forward responsibly. Today, however, is not that day. I urge you to vote to delay Project One, particularly in light of budget adjustments." Excuse me. From Ross Luzuzo, "Dear Board of Education, thank you for your time in advance and for your work on behalf of all the students at OPRFHS as we prepare for a post-COVID-19 educational environment. This comment is in regards to a decision that was made to sacrifice an on-campus asset for two years that is used for activities. Activity were all grades, including boys and girls participate in a no-cut sport. As you know, no-cut sports in high schools are rare these days. This physical school asset also serves as a valuable community asset where family and friends can play and exercise. This asset also is used as a popular PE choice among many students and introduces them to the physical activity they can play for life. Taking such an asset offline for two years does not seem inclusive, equitable, or rational based on the philosophy OPRFHS claims to espouse. The select use of taglines and beliefs only one convenient erodes the confidence and trust a school has with their community. Our own board has recently acknowledged that the school and community trust has been compromised in the past, and unfortunately, the recent exchanges that I have had on this topic only magnify those concerns. For me, these discussions are no longer about tennis courts. Don't get me wrong, I hope to see our students congregating, enjoying on-campus after-school time, practicing and hosting conference meets on campus in the fall, but these past few months go way beyond tennis, go way beyond tennis. I understand from recent documents that the board expressed a renewed passion for the tennis team and a willingness to collaborate to find a solution that reduces further the negative impact to our student body during the Imagine construction process. While our community would like to take these statements at face value, the facts are that we all sit in our homes tonight, and as the clerk reads this statement, the tennis courts currently have fencing holes drilled into them. Fences are actually up. Four courts have been made unusable, and few trucks have parked on them from time to time over the last week. This newly expressed passion for the tennis team and willingness to collaborate seem at best insecure, excuse me, insincere and empty. I don't know how else to describe it. If you're looking for another example of how the school shows its passion for the tennis teams, I encourage you to review the public image Town Hall meeting recording and determine for yourself. Public Imagine Town Hall meeting recording and determine for yourself. For those listening tonight, the tennis community has been asking for collaboration for months. Yes, months. The goal was a desire to have a conversation with the school and the construction company to better understand the process and come up with staging alternatives. These conversations were denied, at least for me. Where did this newly found board passion for tennis and willingness to collaborate come from? By May, the tennis community felt frustrated with the lack of detailed response, and some reached out to attorneys to understand options, to at least get information and to understand the decision process. Only then, only then did this passion and willingness to collaborate emerge from the school. Recall that this passion coincided with fences literally, not figuratively, being erected on the tennis courts. The response from the board did not offer answers, but rather implied the school can do what it wishes, and fencing was now up on the courts anyways. This situation has further eroded trust and hardly suggests a genuine desire to listen to the community or a passion for tennis. I ask the following in hopes of learning more and to ultimately find ways to reduce further the negative impact of the Imagine construction. Will the school share details of the past alternative stages, staging, and trailer hosting design options on the West Field? There is a schematic of a tennis court staging, which is helpful to see. Can you simply share a similar schematic of the proposed West Field staging for comparison? If we understand them both, we can see that there just might be a misunderstanding, and if we can develop a more equitable option. Additionally, will the school share the existing student, share the existing student-specific impact study on the tennis court option, which has led to the construction that this option indeed is at least impactful solution for our students? If only one West Field option was presented that somehow impacted baseball, football, marching band, and softball at the same time, that seemed short-sighted. I am hopeful the construction planners had an alternative space plan available in the West Field or a completely different location on campus, which takes into consideration the seasons and positioning of the fields. With all that's going on in the world today, one may think the tennis courts at OPRF is a small problem, and you would be correct. However, for the few hundred tennis huskies that tried to raise the issue pre-COVID and who will come through the program over the next two years is important. In this instance, do you think student voice was heard? In this instance, has this group of students been treated equitably over the last few years? And will they be treated equitably over the next two? In this instance, do you think the school really wanted to collaborate in February to help find a better solution? It's not about tennis. It's all about how students are treated all of the time. Then from Christine Nelson. "I'm a resident of Oak Park and have a child who will attend OPRFHS in the fall. His name is Paul Nelson, and he is a cancer patient and a student with a disability. It's important that you know who these considered cuts will affect. In reviewing documents for tonight, I saw the potential reductions in scope in work in Project One. While I understand the need to stay in scope, I ask that you thoughtfully review what you are considering cutting. When budgets get tight, often the first thing to go are accessibility upgrades. My hope is that you don't make this decision to cut ADA and that you can find other creative ways to meet both your scope and all the needs of your student. Paul needs the elevator. He is not to be sequestered on the first floor in the team wing. He's a small and has some physical needs that require an elevator for him to successfully manage getting to his classes. He will be one of the casualties of any decision to not make the ADA compliant. We have heard and encouraged the district's aim of equity and excellence through access for all. In achieving the goals of the strategic plan, it's time to make sure you live up to the vision you've been promoting to our community. If not, it becomes clear that you are content with perpetuating inequities in our systems, failing some of the kids, failing some of these kids, including Paul. And that's all I have."
Thank you very much. So we have, next, the approval for the following consent items. So I'm just checking to see if there's anything that we were supposed to pull. Um, okay.
Item I, Sarah, needs to be each separate.
Got it. Okay, yes, if we could pull item I. Thank you. That's what I was looking for and could not find. Was there anything else that people wanted to pull?
Item III, under policies, there are item 360. There's still that clause in there that says each principal and assistant principal shall complete state law requirements to be a pre-qualified evaluator before conducting an evaluation of a teacher or assistant principal, and that language hasn't been modified to include our new administrative structure. I brought this up at the last meeting, and I thought there was going to be a modification to that language, and there wasn't.
Okay, so.
That's a mistake, that's an error, because we didn't make the changes to that item. I'm not sure.
Okay, so it's just not in what we see in the packet?
We did make that change. We made it that very next morning.
Okay, well, let's pull Kate II then, just so we know exactly what we would be voting on. And anybody else want to pull anything else?
Sarah, I have a quick, there was, I think there was a memo that came out related to natural gas, something today that I don't know, so that one is on here. I don't, I have not seen what came out today other than just a headline, so.
Okay, so let's pull J, natural gas pricing contracts. Anybody have anything else you'd like to pull? Okay. All right, I move to approve the following consent items. A, check disbursements and financial resolutions dated May 28, 2020. B, monthly treasures report. C, monthly financial. D, instructional materials. F, homecoming contract for DJ services. G, Secure-Tex contract. H, administrator contracts. K, policies for first reading. 1, 4:50 payment procedures. 3, 7:170 vandalism. 4, 7:325 student fundraising activities. I'm sorry, my dog is whining in the background. 5, 5:200 terms and conditions of employment. 6, 6:300 graduation requirements. 7, 2:125 board member compensation and expenses. 8, 2:160 board attorney. 9, 2:70 vacancies on the Board of Education. 10, 2:200 types of board meetings. 11, 3:40E checklist for superintendent employment contract negotiation process. 12, 5:100 staff development program. 13, 5:150 personnel records. 14, 5:20 substitute teachers. 15, 5:250 leaves of absence. 16, 5:280 duties and qualifications. 17, 5:60 expenses. 18, 5:70 religious holidays. 19, 6:135 accelerated placement program. 20, 8:110 public suggestions and concerns. 21, 2:20-E1 or treatment of closed meeting verbatim recordings and minutes. 22, 2:20-E7 access to closed meeting minutes and verbatim recordings. 23, 340-E checklist for the superintendent employment contract negotiation process. 24, 7:130 student rights and responsibilities. 25, 3:50 administrative personnel other than the superintendent. And then I, open and close minutes of April 23, May 13, and May 19, 2020 in a declaration, the closed session audio tapes of September 2018 shall be displayed in a declaration that the closed session minutes from January 1, 1989 through May 19, 2020 shall remain closed. Is there a second?
Second.
And Gail, is this a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Martieri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Spivey?
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have discussion items.
No, 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 we have to go back to the items that were pulled, don't we?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought for, get those later under action. No, we do them now?
We do them now.
Okay, all right. Um, so we pulled item I, personnel recommendations, including new hires, rehires, retirements, and summer school.
We, yes.
So move to approve personnel recommendations, including new hires, rehires, retirements, and summer school.
Is there a second?
I second. Gina?
Thank you.
The reason I pulled this one is because of the need to, I'm blanking on words, the retirement extension. We said we wanted to be able to discuss that further, so pulling that part out of the recommendation.
Okay, so are we, we're amending the item?
Yes, so I can move to amend the personnel recommendation to include new hires, rehires, and summer school.
Gail, is that, does that satisfy?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. I, I'm sorry, who seconded it, Gina?
I second. This is Tom. I second Jackie's amendment.
Okay, do we have any need for discussion on the amended item? Okay, can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Mr. Martieri?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Spivey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we pulled the.
Um, okay. Next we pulled the J, natural gas pricing contract. And we did get additional material this evening, um, or late this afternoon, I should say, that I don't believe everyone's had a chance to review, including myself. Um, so I move that we table this until our next, um, regularly scheduled meeting unless there is a reason that we need to do it tonight.
I would second that if you need a second, too.
Thanks. Is there any reason this needs to be approved tonight?
Yeah, this is Carolyn. It, uh, it's market.
Can't hear you.
Okay.
It's faint.
Okay. Um, it's, it's on the market. So we had to refresh pricing today. So it's, it's a little bit higher than it was at the last meeting. But it's based on the market condition. So every time I do that, I'm going to have to refresh the pricing the day of the meeting.
I have a question, Sarah.
Please go ahead and ask your question. I'm wondering if maybe we can, um, I, um, I need a second to find the item that was emailed.
Um, my question is the information.
Is it updated in the link for the board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Gina.
The question that I have is if the, um, the information that was just sent, sent to us this evening, was that the refresh that you're talking about?
Correct. Yes, it was.
And so the current, the current document that is up, uh, that's linked in the agenda is the, is the actual current numbers as of today?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all, that's all the questions.
Tom, I know you were the one who pulled this. Did you have any questions or comments?
You're muted, Tom.
Am I mute? Okay. Um, yeah. My reason for pulling was just because there's, you know, I hadn't yet seen and kind of chance to process new information. And I wanted to know what it was. If the answer is, it's just current market refreshing, I'm satisfied.
Okay. Great. Did anybody have any questions on the item? All right, Gail, could you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Kowski?
Yes. I'm sorry, but we just voted to, we just motioned to table this. So that's what we're.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Jackie. Um, no, we're not. I will, um, rescind, is that the right word? My previous motion and instead move to approve, um, item J, natural gas pricing contracts.
I'll second that, Martyri.
Thank you. Thank.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Miss Spivey? Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Martyri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for that, Jackie. Um, and then we have item, uh, K2, uh, 3:60 administrative responsibility to the principal.
Yeah. And that one just needs to, um, be resubmitted with the corrected language in it. Dr. Prude Adams said they've corrected the language, but we don't have the corrected language in this version.
Right.
Correct. We did correct the language to reflect what we heard from the board.
So yeah, the, um, the link is linking back to the same one that we'd had before.
Correct.
So.
In the, um, if you were go to the, um, policies for first read and the kind of cheat sheet, it is in there.
A memo.
Yeah, the, the corrections. Yes, the memo.
Tell me.
If you tell me the policy number, it says the administration has added language. Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. It says the administration has added language that includes who is now responsible for the principal duties. Based upon additional feedback at the power meeting, the following language was added to the second paragraph or any administrator fulfilling the responsibilities typically fulfilled, uh, by those, by these positions.
And that, and excuse me, Dr. Prude Adams. And so that goes in the, um, provision that requires the completion of the state law requirements to be a quote unquote, pre-qualified evaluator?
Yes.
Perfect. That's exactly what we asked for. Thank you.
Um, okay. So I move to approve section, or excuse me, policy 3:60, which is item K2. Uh, administrative responsibilities of the principal. Is there a second?
Second.
Gail?
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Martyri?
Yep.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
And Miss Dixon Spivey?
Uh, yes, thank you. All right. Now on to discussion items. Uh, the Makerspace Program Evaluation Technology Update.
But before we do that, we have two of our new team members who are in the meeting. If they could, uh, show their faces, then give, at least give the board an opportunity to meet two of our newest team members, Mr. Ron Anderson. Ron, would you wave your hand? And Ron is, uh, will be the new executive director of operations upon the retirement of Mike Carriello Show. Wanted to give the board an opportunity to see a face in virtual meetings, uh, so that you know who they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we have Mr. Shamaz Coleman. Would you, can you show your face? There he is. Could you wave? There you go. Uh, Mr. Coleman is the replacement for Ms. Sarah Roothouse. I believe I'm in the correct position. Sarah Roothouse, who will be the division director for visual and performing and practical arts. Welcome.
Welcome to both of you. Thank you so much. We're so happy to have you.
Thank you for having me. Thank you so much.
Okay. You're welcome to stay, Mr. Coleman, if you like, just to get a feel. And I know, Mr. Anderson, you're staying so you can hear the presentation on facilities. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, board, for allowing me to digress. Thank you. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our current item is the Educational Technology Update and Makerspace Program Eval. Uh, this is the second of our biannual update regarding educational technology. And we've also had it, uh, put together in collaboration with the program evaluation on the Makerspace. Making the presentation this evening is Kiwan Carter, Instructional Technology Coordinator. Earl McLauren, Instructional Technology Coordinator. Matt McMurray, Instructional Technology Teacher Leader. And Christopher Thane, Senior Director of Educational Technology. Uh, this item is presented for information and discussion only. And it is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority 2, Transformative Education and District Policy 6:210, 6:230 and 6:235.
Good evening, board. Hello. Uh, just giving a second for our presentation to load here. Here we go. Um, we wanted to, this is a, uh, consolidation of, um, uh, two, uh, presentations that we were scheduled to bring to you. One was in a general update, an edu, uh, the Educational Technology Department. Um, the other presentation is the program evaluation of our Makerspace. Um, you folks know me already. Uh, you've seen me many times. Um, and I also am bringing along with me, um, our technology, uh, teacher learning center staff or instructional technology staff, uh, Matt McMurray, uh, or, or, early on, McLauren and Kiwan Carter. Um, and I want to give each of them a chance to, uh, talk to you a little bit and explain what they do here. So I'm going to turn it over to them. Matt, you want to go first?
Uh, sure. Thank you. Um, my name is Matt McMurray. I'm the Instructional Technology Teacher Leader. Uh, this is my sixth year at OPRF, five of which I've spent teaching history. Um, I love technology and so I applied for this position and I've enjoyed it. Didn't quite know, uh, that we would end up in a remote learning situation. So that's been a little bit interesting. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's all I got.
Uh, good evening to the board members who, and folks, we are meeting for the first time at Mins. My name is Relena McLauren. Everybody calls me Earl. Please do. Um, I am an, uh, Instructional Technology Coordinator here at OPRF. This is my fifth year already. Um, I have a master's in instructional technology with specialization in K through 12 learning and online learning. I am a level one Google certified educator and I am, uh, awaiting my PEL in English uh, and my second master's of arts and teaching. I really like to learn. Um, my expertise is visual and web design, instructional technology methods and online learning.
And I am Kiwan Carter. I have been, uh, an instructional technology coordinator here at OPRF for two and a half years. Uh, but I've been working in the building for the past 10 years, uh, as a substitute teacher, paraprofessional, vocal jazz director, show choir music director and assistant technological, uh, excuse me, assistant technical director for the theater department. I am a level two Google certified educator and my expertise involves technology integration with respect to Google Classroom and the Google for Education suite.
Thank you, everybody.
Good seeing you guys.
See you.
Good to be seen. Um, we've got, uh, the, the COVID pandemic, um, hit us hard and, uh, took, uh, I have to say thank you at this point. Our faculty, our staff, our administration, the community, the students, their flexibility, um, their resilience in, uh, the onset of this and throughout, has been the reason that we were able to continue to do meaningful work. So their partnership is greatly appreciated. Um, we want to take you through some of the, uh, impact and how it affected our department. And I'm going to turn this over to Matt for this one.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Um, so this is a timeline of all of the steps that we had to take. Uh, once we knew that we were not going to have school, uh, and, uh, once the governor made the announcement that we were, uh, that all schools were closing, we had to take some pretty swift steps. So the first one, uh, was to set up an e-learning website, which we've used, uh, to house a lot of resources for teachers. Uh, we used it initially for, uh, attendance for students. Uh, and just basically anything I could think of and, and our team could think of to, uh, enhance preparation for what is, uh, was a new circumstance for everybody, uh, adapting to a complete remote learning scenario. Uh, and I've continued to update the site. Uh, we've put a blog up there. Uh, we really, uh, I did, took a lot of steps to, to try to make it a place where we could do some SEL work. So, uh, there's a Silver Linings blog. There's a lot of, um, uh, SEL resources, uh, things that I got from counselors, social workers, et cetera. Um, and, and, you know, largely it's been a very successful hub for, um, uh, for the remote learning experience. Second thing we did was, uh, we transitioned to remote support. Uh, so our techs, the people that have to physically work on hard drives, had to figure out how to do that safely uh, and include social distancing, make sure we were in coordinate with the CDC and the state's guidelines. Uh, on March 16th, so you can see just right off the bat, um, we had to take a couple of big steps, big pivots, uh, in what we normally do. Uh, on April 9th, uh, after we got updated guidance and were, um, given professional development time, we developed a, uh, professional development specifically, uh, geared towards getting teachers more prepared for remote learning. Uh, I'm going to talk about that on the next slide, so I won't spend too much, uh, time on that. Uh, and then April 14th, we made, uh, what I think is a pretty significant change in our attendance policy, uh, which meant that students only had to fill out one form a day. Prior to that, they were filling out, uh, a, a form for each class and teachers were in charge of attendance. So we were able to take that off of, uh, the teachers' plates and allow students to directly put in their attendance, uh, just once a day, uh, which was great. Um, skipping ahead to May and sort of what we've been working on this month, uh, we have been working with Jason Lee to prepare for a remote summer school experience. Uh, and, uh, our digital literacy teachers, uh, which they'll talk about this later. Um, Earl is, is one of them, been preparing to sort of make that class a model for what, uh, potentially could come in the fall, uh, should we continue to be in remote learning. Uh, so working on protocols around remote learning, uh, and helping summer school work out, uh, the logistics to be able to do that in a very short amount of time. Uh, and then in June, well, you know, and currently, uh, we'll be preparing for the fall semester. And, uh, Earl and myself and Kiwan, uh, along with others in the EdTech department are, um, embedded in the committees to be able to do that and to be able to lend our expertise on, on technology and instructional technology to that effort. And Chris, you can skip ahead.
You showing the right slide? You want me to skip this one?
Oh, no, you're fine. Yeah, just, just. Uh, so I mentioned the remote learning PD. Uh, on April 9th, uh, we introduced a three-part PD uh, that was, uh, under the circumstances made optional for teachers. Uh, and, uh, it basically, we wanted to give teachers sort of an intro to the best practices involved with remote learning. Uh, that was part one. Part two was, uh, going through some of the tech tools that they could use to execute on those best practices. So, uh, they had, uh, a choice of nine or 10 tech tools that they could, uh, sort of dive into and learn how to use. Uh, and then the third part was application. So, uh, we set up a lesson plan template for them to be able to make a lesson plan using both steps one and steps two, uh, the best practices and the tech tools that they had just learned about. Um, and we followed up on April 24th, which was the second and last PD day with, uh, a reflection. Uh, so for the teachers that were able to complete all of the steps and, uh, implement a lesson in their classroom, uh, we hosted an online reflection, uh, discussion essentially for them to participate in. And you can skip out.
And here we've got, uh, we've got a pretty good graphical representation of, um, what was happening during that time, um, when we were going through, uh, the closure and preparing. Uh, you can see, uh, prior to, uh, the closure, uh, what kind of a ticket, uh, volume we were dealing with on a, on a weekly basis. And, uh, also in the orange, what you're seeing there are student tickets. Um, we're going to talk a little bit about the student support that we provided, uh, at the high school. But, uh, you can see that there was kind of a, a lull before the big wave hit and we knew it was coming. That line that you see across the slide is a representation of what we closed. So in preparation for, um, the, that reopening of e-learning, as it was called at the time, we cleaned our plate. Um, we dove in and cleaned up all the tickets we possibly could, um, so that we could be prepared for what we knew was coming and it did come. Um, we got hit pretty hard and also keep in mind that every one of these tickets took additional steps because we could no longer be physically present, uh, to assist. So the ability to remotely, um, get into devices and do work if necessary, uh, was all part of this. Uh, quickly coming up with safe protocols was all part of this. As well as dealing with, uh, a, a, a pretty substantial increase in the amount of student direct support uh, that we normally, uh, have our student, uh, help desk handling. So that, uh, gives you an indication of, of what that looked like during that time and during that transition. Wanted to give you a quick update on the phone system replacement. Uh, we did get that completed despite the closure. Um, and we actually, uh, in a safe manner, uh, following all of the guidelines that we had available at the time, made sure that, uh, we were following the schedule that we intended. Uh, and we got that completed mid-March, replaced over 700 phones. We now have a unified phone, uh, solution in place. Prior to that, we had two phone solutions in the school. We expect, uh, return on investment by the fifth year with a substantial savings per year to the district. And then finally, I wanted to give you, uh, for the tech department specific, the nuts and bolts part of it, cybersecurity. Um, especially, it's always important, but during this time, um, those folks with nefarious intent, uh, don't take a holiday. And so we, uh, kept up with our cybersecurity cell phishing initiatives. We have two partners that we are now working with. Know before as somebody that we've been working with for quite a while. Click came to us. Uh, they are our insurance provider. And, uh, they were offering, um, some, uh, cell phishing mech, uh, solutions themselves, or solution themselves, which we took advantage of. Um, to give you an idea, so prone rate, um, you basically have three levels. If an email is open. If an email is opened, um that's one level of danger. If a link within that's embedded in that email is clicked on, that's another level of danger. And if information is supplied, that's where you really run into trouble. Um, as uh this is from uh know before's site, 91% of successful data breaches start with a phishing attack. Um, it's the most common way for systems uh to be compromised. Um, our pronate to opening uh the email uh that was uh through the self-fishing program was 18%, national average is 27%. So we are seeing a a good um uh portion of our population at the school understanding the dangers and being suspicious of emails as they come in. 0% supplied information. And that is a really good statistic to see. We're going to continue in this work to continue the education and make people aware and be suspicious of strange emails.
All right, and uh I'm just going to talk a little bit about the digital literacy embed project that we've been working on. Um, we uh do you think this is very critical work? Uh, and part of the reason for that is because we offer a digital literacy class in summer school. Um, but students that that comes at a cost. And so uh students who can maybe can't afford or don't have the time to go to summer school uh cannot participate in that. So we've been trying to find a way to embed some of those same skills and competencies into uh a class that reaches all students, all freshmen. Um, so we started that project with English and uh I'll be brief because we reported on this back in January. We were able to reach uh over 350 students across 15 sections of English. Uh, we did three or four days of uh ISD-aligned uh standards-based uh lessons. Uh, and I presented some data at that time on the efficacy of those lessons and sort of the uh skills uh pre and post that students showed. Um, based on feedback we were getting and I think based on a lot of the work that's going on in the school outside of what we were trying to do, um, the team of English teachers that we were working with uh expressed some difficulties sort of fitting this product into what they were doing uh with, you know, curriculum restructuring, emoji training, uh a lot of things. So based on that feedback and based on the responses that we got, we moved, we shifted that project to our health teachers. Uh, health reaches also every ninth grade student. Uh, and we've had a number of meetings this spring uh with our health colleagues and I I suppose early, late in the winter. Um, and we've met with the health T C T a couple of times uh to talk about how we're gonna do this next year. We've got some summer curriculum uh on deck to be able to plan for a fall um a- and spring of next year, depending on, you know, what the learning scenario is like, uh rollout of our embed and health. And I'll turn it over to Earl, Chris, you can switch the slide.
So uh when we went uh one-to-one four years ago, uh we created the digital, the summer digital literacy course that Matt uh just referred to, to help equip incoming freshmen in particular with the technology skills they need to be successful at OPRF and beyond. However, a- as Matt just stated, um, this is not readily available to all incoming freshmen. Uh, so about a year and a half ago, um nah, I take that back, three years ago, we embarked on uh creating this class and then also working towards the embed. Uh, now with the health department, uh in the interim, we have continued to offer and expand this summer uh summer school class, which is indirect uh parallel to what they are doing in the embed project that you just heard about. Um, we have and are in the process of revising the curriculum to allow for meaning meaningful remote learning in alignment with ISB remote learning guidelines and the uh International Society for Technology in Education Technology Standards. Um, just a note for summer 2020, we have six sections of digital literacy running. 150 students enrolled with three instructors and three teaching assistants, all of whom are veterans of the program. So we are looking forward to having a very um fun summer and hopefully be able to do some um experimentation like Matt um alluded to, to see what works and and what doesn't work when it comes to meaningful learning uh remotely. So I know we all love a good Bright Bites action plan summary. Um, uh, as this year has kind of unfolded, um, we've had to set aside some of our priorities on the Bright Bites uh action plan to obviously focus on remote learning and keeping each other safe. However, um through some work that we have been doing, excuse me, uh in collaboration with the Director of Student Learning, Lori Furin's office, um, we are trying to develop a multi-year technology professional development plan to address growth areas as well as develop a technology integration curricular tool to help teachers assess the own efficacy of their technology integration. Uh, talking in particular about digital uh information literacy and citizenship. We are working in collaboration with um our OPRF H S librarian Amber Hooper to develop a four-year multimedia informational campaign targeted at students to address uh both information literacy and digital citizenship growth areas as um as shown in the latest Bright Bites report. And lastly, we are continuing to develop and refine our remote learning protocols. Um, our team will be aligning these protocols with industry technology standards set by ISB and again the Illinois State Board of Education Remote Learning Guidelines uh so that when we roll this out in the fall, it is um it is not only aligned to standards, but also checking all the boxes as far as ISB is concerned.
Okay, we're going to transition now into the Makerspace Student Help Desk Evaluation Report. And it we'd uh, I I want to uh it's uh mention and uh acknowledge Doug Hill's contribution uh in his role as the former instructional technology teacher leader, uh instrumental to the foundational elements of the Makerspace. Um, John Angelini and Rochelle Bryant, our technology support specialists, have really risen um to the need changes, to the evolution of the uh student technology support. Uh, their previous roles were lab aids and they are now engaged in work directly with students in 21st century learning. Program overview, um when as we were transitioning to one-to-one uh for all the enrolled students uh in back in 2017, um, the need for a center that was focused on um student uh supportive technology was apparent. Um, included in that vision uh was the establishment of a Makerspace. And so uh we, through administrative support, there was an unused portion that had previously been the main floor of the library. We secured that and turned it into our student help desk and Makerspace. October 2018, we opened the school doors. Uh, there's some funding and uh refunding information there. Essentially, a lot of this, you know, we support through the educational technology budget. It's approximately 16,000 a year uh to include that addition uh in addition to the supply of a 3D printer. And we have plans um to expand those types of technologies. Two existing full-time positions were repurposed. Their main objective um had was to provide a comprehensive location for student technology support. And that ranged from basic hardware support to the advanced critical thinking, content acquisition and exploration, fun engagement, exactly the points that Earl was referring to. And the goals were to provide evidence of of the value in the decision to include this in Project One uh in the Student Resource Center and provide a comprehensive space for learning of the four Cs and the related skills. So that boils down to two questions. Did the students' individual and class um-based engagement occur at substantial levels? Was it found to be positive? And did the students receive support in all levels of technology uh with this uh program in place? The way that we collected that data, we have class reservations, uh classes are scheduled um that allows a tally of faculty-led use. We also um implemented a more detailed collection. So uh our staff in that area, every time a student comes to the student help desk, um, there's a brief form that is filled out that I I identifies what their need was and gives us some information that we could then turn into meaningful reports.
So in partnership with the technology support specialists, uh we created a Google form uh that every student who comes through the Makerspace has to fill out. Uh, because the Makerspace shares a location with the student help desk, we wanted to accurately account for those students uh who only came for Chromebook assistance. Uh, you can see by by the chart there that uh most of the time students visited the space for Chromebook assistance, but you'll also notice that nearly a third of the visits were Makerspace-specific. Uh, we wanted to get a better understanding of how students were using the Makerspace so that so uh we also asked the students which areas of the Makerspace they were there to explore. This question allows us to focus our attention in the areas that interest students most as well as enhance the experience of the other areas in order to encourage more students to utilize this space. Almost 40% uh of students who came to use the Makerspace were there to use construction materials. So we're talking Legos, connects, cardboard, Kiva planks. And then another 30% were there to work on audiovisual projects. So we're talking video production, green screen work, uh and podcasting.
We also, by taking individual account of uh each student that came in, were able to make sure um that the services uh were being used um in a in a manner that was uh ethnically and racially representative of our demographic. And so on the uh left there, you're seeing Makerspace usage and um the demographics that are associated with that and then Chromebooks um there as well. Um, one uh interesting thing to point out is that uh in relation to the next slide, you have a uh a percentage um that's uh marked under white that is greater than our percentage of white at the school. The way that our our data is collected um and held in our student information system, many students who identify racially as white identify um ethnically as Hispanic. And so that tends to uh increase the uh amount of uh students that are shown in the white segments in the previous slide. It, oh, but however, when we're looking at uh ethnicity, we are seeing also there a fairly representative um uh level of use of the space. In the Makerspace, it's substantially greater. And uh we kind of dove into that a little bit. Um, it was a Dia de los Muertos um that uh contributed to a lot of that additional use of the Makerspace uh during that time period.
Um, when uh looking to hear from the students directly on um if a space in the school was created like the the Makerspace, how um likely would they would be to use it? This was a custom question that we added to, again, Bright Bites back in the fall. Um, we are working directly with Bright Bites to embed um a clearer racial equity component in next year's survey. Um, however, overall, as you can see from the data that we were um able to determine that 65% of the students who responded had no problem with using a techno- technology resource base like Makerspace regardless of um who the race of who's managing it or the race of students who are using it. If anything, this data point has uh, this entire data point tells us that students are actually more concerned with the stigma of being um of it being a remedial space for students. However, again, this only reflects about 20% of the students who responded. Anecdotally, however, we've seen students of all abilities, races, ethnicities, use the Makerspace both in classes and independently, which tells us at least anecdotally that our students felt comfortable um with exploring our Makerspace.
Yeah, and to be honest, uh, looking at this slide, I I um we're applying more scrutiny to it. Um, this is a an area that we're working with Bright Bites on so we could um dissect further into that 64.5% to see um who it was that answered the question that way to better understand is that, is that, does that have bias in it too? Bottom line, we're trying to pull information that informs us of the things that we're doing well in the areas that we need improvement. We're we're going to continue to work with Bright Bites to get what we can from them. And if we don't, we're going to endeavor to come up with better ways of getting that information ourselves. So this is what we have so far, but we intend to do better as well.
Uh, now I just want to go over some of the the highlights and the updates that have happened in the Makerspace this year. In addition to the individual drop-ins by students, uh, we have had a tremendous amount of activity from classes. Uh, from October 2019 to March 2020, uh, we had more than 150 classes between 25 teachers who utilized and incorporated the Makerspace into their curriculum, a number that was set to grow in April and May before the COVID-19 uh protocols took effect. In order to meet the increased demand for classroom Makerspace projects, we made significant changes to the space and added workspace, storage capacity and supplies. The changes included the creation of a second classroom space in order to facilitate multiple class projects at one time, uh a dedicated workstation for the facilitator and more flexible seating to promote collaboration and innovation. We'd like to take this time to thank retired history teacher at Niede North Hamel and Assistant Technology Specialist Lisa Vincent for their generous contribution of supplies to the Makerspace. Last year was, as it was the first year that the Makerspace was open, we spent a lot of time introducing the space to teachers and students alike. Uh, we used the space to challenge teachers to think outside of the box when presenting content to their classes. And uh most of the teachers who collaborated with us last year were uh collaborated with us on smaller, short-term projects and they were mostly from the English and History divisions. This year, we had um, we had more long-term projects. Uh, and those projects happened with English, science, history, math, world languages, health and special education classes. Uh, but our biggest initiative was to facilitate more intra-departmental collaboration, uh which we were able to achieve with the help of Sana Jaber, Giselle Romillo and the team program led by Chris Medlin and Kevin Callahan. Together, we uh created the Uncommon Commonality Series. Uh, the purpose was to have students from mainstream classes collaborate with students in the team program to find three unique interests that they all have in common. Once the common, the uncommon commonalities were found, the students were asked to create physical representations of their interests. This series challenged students and the teachers in all of the four C-related skills, collaboration, communication, critical thinking and creativity. Can move to the next slide.
I'm trying. There we go. All right, I would bear with me one second here. I'm going to uh get this so that we can view this video.
And before we play the video, I just want to explain what this is a little bit. Um, speaking of creativity, in uh the fall of 2019, in order to promote the Makerspace to all students, uh, we rolled out a school-wide Makerspace challenge. The challenge consisted of five levels with four challenges in each level. Students had a choice, uh, excuse me, students had to choose one challenge to complete at each level. The challenges progressed in difficulty as the students moved through the levels. Uh, in order to encourage more participation, uh, there were, there was a prize for completing a challenge at each level and the prizes got better as you progressed. The catch, in order to win a prize, the challenges needed to be completed in order by level. So if you wanted the prize for a level five, for a level five, uh, you needed to complete the previous four levels. The best part uh was if a participant was to complete all five levels, they would win all of the prizes offered for the challenge. Uh, we needed, we had nearly 70 students sign up uh to participate in the Makerspace challenge. 12 students actually submitted evidence of completion and of those students, eight completed all five levels. Take a look at the highlights from the very first OPRF Schoolwide Makerspace Challenge. Take a look at the highlights from the very first OPRF Schoolwide Makerspace Challenge.
All right. Here we go.
Today, we're going to do the Level Four Makerspace Challenge.
All right, let me get back to our presentation. Sorry to do the video. I'm sorry if the quality on that, beginning of that part was a little off, but I was watching it on a, on a separate machine to watch the webinar, and it seemed to clear up towards the end. So I'm hoping that that came through fairly well. And of course, it's in the presentation for your preview, or for you to view at your leisure when you're on your own machine. Let me get back in here. Here we go. So in summation, faculty use was positive, continues to grow. The inclusion of this in the plans for the Student Resource Center, we feel is a good investment, that this is exactly the type of thing that we want to have in an area to make a welcoming, engaging place for students. Student use statistics indication, indicate that it's being used both for basic technical support and the four Cs and advanced critical thinking, content acquisition, et cetera. And that we're going to continue to focus on being strategic and purposeful in assuring that student representation continues in that space. Recommendations, so as we grow with Project One, engage with the Imagine and Project One design teams. That is done and ongoing. So we continue to work very closely with the design teams in the planning for that space and how it contributes to the overall goals of that space. We intend to engage more fully with the Director of Racial Equity to implement programs that continue to encourage representative student participation. And we intend to enhance technology experience for students and enhance collaboration with faculty. And that's the end of our presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions for anyone?
Yeah, I have a question. First, a couple comments, and then I have two questions. Thank you, Chris and your entire team. I really appreciate the work you're doing and look forward to your presentations. I think the work that you've done prior to this made us as well-prepared as we probably could be for such a situation as we're in today. So hats off to your team for your, your discipline and your efforts. I have two questions, one for Matt, which, you know, he mentioned that the April ninth, I believe, and twenty-fourth, there was PD that was done and it was voluntary. And I'm just curious, you know, what kind of participation we, we saw with the, with that and any feedback on that PD? And I have a second question. I'm going to just throw out that, which is, is not directly to your presentation, but I'd love to hear an update on where we think we are with respect to Chromebook availability, you know, one-to-one device for, for the coming seminar, for the fall because of concerns about delivery and needing people to return them, so.
Sure. So Matt, do you want to go ahead first?
Yeah, I'll start on that. Chris, can you put slide five up just for reference?
Sure.
Thank you much. So we do have data on that. Just over half of our teachers, we ran this through Google Classroom, and about half of our teachers joined that Google Classroom page. Twenty-one point five percent roughly participated in step one, so doing the best practices stuff. So I was able to look at the comments of the teachers we're making and see how many were able to read and engage with the article. The second step, about fifteen percent participated in. So looking at the tech tools, we, we posted a form under that step that asked teachers just to tell us what two tech tools they were looking at. So that was how we gained participation. And then the final step, the lesson plan, we had about ten percent engagement in that piece. So they actually turned in a, a lesson plan template into Google Classroom. So we were able to see that, give them feedback on that, and are, enlisted our instructional coaches to assist with that.
Thank you.
And then in regards to the Chromebooks, I would be sweating a lot more if I didn't have good news to bring. But we were engaged with our vendor CDW pretty extensively. The supply chain was having bottlenecks at various places. We were especially concerned for summer school because approximately five hundred Chromebooks go out during summer school for our incoming eighth graders. We supply over half of our freshman stock before we're even out of the first week of June. And today, we were, we received our pallets of five hundred of our total stock of Chromebooks for the year. So we are going to be able to supply Chromebooks to summer school. We had to work on methods to expedite that. There is a significant portion of work that would have been completed by CDW that our tech, that our own techs are taking on to ensure that those devices are ready for distribution next week. And CDW is in the process of receiving the rest of our Chromebooks, and that's where we're concentrating our efforts for the supply chain there, over a month behind when we expected to receive them. But we, we've got them in. They hit the dock today.
Thank you.
I have a question, Sarah. Is that okay?
Yeah, of course. Go ahead.
All right, so I'm, I'm going to go down a slightly different path. So I want to thank you, Chris, and your team. Wonderful presentation. Great stuff. Chris, Matt, or I don't know who's responsible for this, is your work in any way informed by or based on the Universal Design for Learning? And in particular, are you, are you taking a universal design for learning approach to the cross-disciplinary collaboration and utilization of the facility? And obviously, I'm asking that because all the research shows that the UDL, project-based learning, and these approaches close achievement gaps based on race. The evidence proves it. So I'm wondering if that's informing this practice.
Definitely. Anybody from the TLC team want to take that one?
Yes, UDL was one of the recommendations by ISB that we also put in our recommendations for summer school remote learning protocol. I came up with tons of resources for teachers to sort of brush up on UDL as well, the digital literacy classes in particular, have been designed with UDL in, in mind. We have several different resources that we will be trying to implement as, as best as possible, things like screen readers, written and video instructions and text to make sure that everything is accessible. We'll also be explaining that to our digital literacy teachers once we all come, come together, because we are taking a very strategic approach to retooling this curriculum because it's very similar to what we did last year, but retooling it specifically with UDL in mind and UDL as it pertains to a remote learning environment. I'm going to hand it over to Matt, because I think you also asked about UDL in the embed.
Right.
Yes. Matt.
Sorry, finding the mute button. Yeah, it, it's something that we always try to emphasize. We, during the embed with English, I'm guessing it may be similar with health. We'll, we'll see how it looks after we plan it. We delivered it to our World Studies immersion classes, and UDL was a priority there. We actually added on a fourth day with that class to be able to chunk the lessons a little bit differently to, to help students with, with a little bit higher needs. So it's something that I'm always thinking about. And in terms of remote learning, one of the things that we were able to do that I think is very helpful is provide students with access, all students with access to Google Read and Write. And that's something that we've put resources on the remote learning website for students and for teachers to be able to, to access and learn more about, which helps to make a lot of online documents more accessible. It's got readers, screen readers, and all that type of stuff. So it's something that, yes, I definitely implemented into the embed. And as we push into health and figure out how we're going to do that in the fall, it will be something that's a part of that discussion.
You know, that's, that's, that's great to hear. And my, my final question, this is probably not answerable for tonight, but it, but I would love to know if we're doing more PD around UDL to encourage faculty to represent content in multiple ways and give students multiple options for expressing themselves? Because that's one, once again, one of those best practices that has stimulated student interest in their coursework and eliminated achievement gaps by race, by income, by ethnicity. So I'm just wondering if we're going down that path too.
Two quick comments to that. I know that, and, and Kiwan and Matt, please jump in. I know that there are, there were some teachers before we closed that were actually doing projects that was based on student choice in the Makerspace, giving them sort of free rein to construct and use the materials in the way that they felt best to, and you know, get their information across. So that's one of the things that teachers are experimenting, experimenting with. I personally, and I don't think we have access to like the numbers of classes and people outside of what we've seen in the Makerspace, but I know that in, in the future, should professional development time become available for instructional technology specifically, that is, that will be one of our, one of the things we focus on in terms of, well, remote learning and just regular, you know, brick and mortar learning as well.
Excellent answers. And Earl, I'm beginning to worship the water you walk on. But great, good, great job. And I'm really excited to hear that the UDL is being incorporated. I, and I do think that this is something that maybe the board should consider finding a way to support professional development for UDL for the faculty and the utilization of these things going forward as, as a key component of our equity initiative. That's low cost, but very high benefit. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, can I ask a question, follow up to that?
Yeah, of course.
I would actually imagine, Ralph, that, that the staff, UDL isn't a brand new thing. So I would be curious if Greg or Laurie have information, because I'm quite sure that there's some outside of this amazing. And also, thank you all so much for this presentation. Excellent work. The, and your attention to making the effort to dig into the racial makeup of the students and who's using it. I really appreciate your intentionality behind that. It's really important. But as far as UDL goes, I really do think that probably Greg and Laurie could speak to the fact that there are probably quite a few already that this isn't, it's not a brand new thing, is what I want to say. And it's, it's likely that educators in the building are already doing that quite a bit. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to make an assumption that they don't know about this as a practice already.
Gina.
So I guess my question is to Greg. Greg, could you talk a little bit about how that might already be part of what is being done by the educators in the building?
Yeah, sure, I can talk to it. So when we were first presenting the curriculum evaluation and design process, well, back in the fall, actually a year ago last fall, we had talked about UDL as one of the frameworks that we were pulling from to help think about how we are approaching our curriculum. But as we get into professional development moving forward, and we take a look at how the curriculum is being designed, you'll see in future conversations we have with Lauren Fiorenza and others that you'll, that the UDL will be reflected in that.
All right.
But it's a, so Greg, just to be, to clarify that answer, right? So it's, it's an area we're moving into. It's not an area that we have been deeply invested in in the past. Is that correct?
Well, the answer to that question, Ralph, actually is in understanding what UDL is, right? So as a packaged framework, that has been a kind of systemic form of professional development? No, not right. That hasn't been a focus of our professional development individually. But UDL itself is an approach to differentiation that's embedded in different layers, in different layers of pedagogy. So instruction, assessment, and curriculum design. And so you, we will be able to see those levels of differentiation built into what we're doing. And our teachers are already doing a number of elements that fit very smoothly into a UDL framework. So that's where that.
That's what I was getting at, Greg. It's not, there, there may be a new term for it, but you know how education is, right? A lot of those practices of UDL, as it's a fancy new term, are already being done by educators, as I've, as I've witnessed in education. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
But the, once again, to do a systems change, I just think it's really important to focus on what Greg highlighted there, and that is the professional development piece in a comprehensive and systemic way to articulate across grade levels, to coordinate across disciplines, and to use UDL as a basis for that, and to allow far more student flexibility in how they convey mastery of content, and to have far more innovative approaches to representation of content by faculty would be, I think, a significant step forward for OPRF High School and one that we should pursue in a big-time way on the professional development line to embed it in the system and make that big change. Because right now, we still have these disparities in achievement. And if you do fully embed UDL, what it has been shown to do is eliminate achievement disparities. So clearly, we haven't gotten past that point. And the focus on the professional development, the evidence-based professional development that supports implementation of the UDL, I think is crucial going forward.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ralph. I agree with what you're saying. And what I just want to point out is that components of it are being done. And I appreciate that we want to title it in a systemic way and embed it in the way that you're speaking of. What, the point that I really like to make is that it's not going to be our silver bullet either. So like, having UDL is not going to all of a sudden equalize the entire system. So I appreciate it as a piece, and I would like us to continue to do all of the other pieces that we will need to do as well. And I know that that work is also happening. So I just, I know you might want to try to get another word in there, Ralph, but I'm just trying to close this conversation out. Thanks.
Well, I'm not going to give you the last word, Gina, because I guess you don't get to decide that.
You never do, Ralph.
I didn't hear me say anything about a silver bullet. And I didn't hear, you didn't hear me say anything about an individual faculty member doing X, Y, or Z. But an individual faculty member doing X, Y, and Z that's not coordinated, systemic, and supported by professional development isn't going to change the system. And when you look at the research, this is one of the key levers that the evidence shows actually changes, eliminates achievement gaps. So in addition to everything else we're doing and that we're supposed to be doing and that we need to continue doing, a highlighted emphasis on appropriate professional development to systematically implement UDL across disciplines and classes is the right approach if we want to, at the end of the day, take an evidence-based approach to addressing the achievement gap.
Thank you, Ralph. I think we all have, that is our end goal in mind. Jackie, I believe you have a question?
If I can still recall it, yes. First of all, thank you for the presentation. And I truly appreciate the thinking ahead and being prepared with what you knew would be a time of deep need in terms of the tech, you know, needs of our students and staff. The question I have has to do with the digital literacy from two standpoints, from our student standpoint with the summer school and the second piece, the teachers. So the question about students is for incoming freshmen, just if we're applying a racial equity lens, what percentage of freshmen that are coming in are availing themselves of this, as you all said, necessary course? And I imagine now with online learning becoming our new necessity even more so. And so how do we ensure that all of our freshmen are, I know you talked about the health class, but the summer school has been the kind of key, that's the head start. I mean, they're getting a preview. So that's one part. And then the other question, what is the, I know the PD optional, I don't know if there are opportunities for additional PD given what we know summer will look like and are assuming now and preparing for what a part of the fall at least will look like. Do we have a sense of the, what our current capacity for, with our teachers in terms of their digital literacy is there? Has that been assessed in any way?
I'll speak to the first question. I don't have those statistics readily at hand, but we can pull them. We can get that information.
That would be a Jason Lee thing.
Yeah. It's data that we have tracked every year, both as we get into summer school and as we exit, of course, for our program evaluation for summer school. So we have those reports ready to roll. So no problem.
Yeah. And I would just, as, you know, ongoing request, as we adhere to our desire to, you know, view things through a racial equity lens in terms of our, you know, work to reduce achievement disparities, racial disparities with achievement, that that information is included as a matter, of course, that that becomes our default, that we always have that, those, you know, demographic breakdowns.
Sure. Got it.
Thank you. I think Matt, oh, I'm sorry, Earl, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I was going to answer the second question in terms of teachers' digital literacy capacity. We are working right now with Lori Fiorenza's office as well as those in the administration to facilitate a teacher technology. Part of what will be a larger needs assessment will include some of these technology, digital skills that we are needing some more specific granular data on that goes beyond what we learn in Bright Bites. So hopefully that will come together soon and be a source of information for us going forward with putting together the protocol for the fall.
And Earl, I appreciate that. And I think my question goes back to what was the assumptions that we had as a district when we went to one-to-one, that there would be a certain level of digital literacy of our staff. And, but it sounds like, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we're still not quite sure, like for example, with the PD you just did, is there a sense that every teacher could do an online lesson plan? Do we have that? Do we know if all of our teachers are able to provide, you know, those steps?
I think Greg's ready to chime in there.
Yeah, I can. I mean, we don't have a statistic that we can point to, Jackie, to say, you know, this is exactly what it is. But as part of our transition meetings that we're having right now as we gear up for the fall, we know that professional development is really one of the most important topics that we're going to have to tackle to both shore up skills that our teachers do have and to fill in gaps where skills don't exist. We've talked about the importance of synchronous learning and making sure that the lessons that we provide in synchronous learning experiences, one-to-one experiences with kids and teachers as part of the remote learning platform are not only essential, but they are things that we are going to support the quality of as we roll that out. So while we are in the early stages of those plans, you know, it is absolutely a commitment, a very clear, clearly expressed commitment that we've made to everybody on the committee moving forward.
Can I just ask, how long have we had the one-to-one? This just?
It was school year 2017, so 2016, 2017 school year. So we're in our fourth year now.
So four years in, and we have not evaluated what our capacity is and our PD continues to be optional. That's my observation.
I will add that in those four years, we have offered PD based on teacher data. We did do a technology needs assessment two years ago, I believe, in terms of technology integration and PD. However, how it's facilitated or who's in charge of that, that's something that instructional tech can't.
We participate in it in conjunction with Greg and Lori. And honestly, I'm seeing levels of partnership that in all my years here I haven't seen. It's greatly appreciated. So, you know, I am seeing the wheels spin. And then we're also getting, as limited as it is, it's still a source of insight. And that's the Bright Bites data that we're doing yearly to get a finger on the pulse to understand where we need to apply focus.
We've also been experimenting with self-paced and blended PD, still on an optional basis, but trying to sort of formulate and strategically build those kind of programs so that we can put a good product towards the teachers as well as continuing our Lunch and Learns, our Technology Learning Center, monthly newsletter, blogs, et cetera. We invest in any avenue possible to get technology, professional development and education forth to the teachers through the methods that we can control.
And I did not mean to suggest otherwise, and I hope my comment wasn't taken that way, but just, so I appreciate everything that's being done, but was really trying to tie it in with digital literacy from the standpoint of our goals with going one-to-one. So thank you for all you're doing.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Might I speak to the optional PD on April 9th? I just want to clarify why that was optional. In my seven months, almost a year at Oak Park now, none of the PD has been optional. This was only optional because it was our sudden removal from the school in the plight of a pandemic that we felt the staff was just not in a place to sit and engage in a day of PD when they were scrambling, in all honesty, to pull together lessons that they could do via virtual or different platforms. So at that point, we simply opted to allow them to, based on their comfort level and where they felt they were in their learning, opt in or opt out. But please know that it is absolutely part of the PD plan for next year. It has very much been discussed in the last two meetings I've had this week about the plan for next year, whether we are remote, whether we are in some hybrid. In addition to as we speak to the supports that are offered or the ways we're changing things, that we are creating a literacy resource center that is not just about reading, but it is also incorporating digital literacy with Mr. McMurray as well. So I just wanted to make sure you knew those things.
And I appreciate that. And like I said, I did not mean to turn this into any type of bashing, but I'm just trying to connect the dots with a broader conversation about the goals of going one-to-one. So if it came off as anything other than that, that was not my intent and I do apologize.
Matt, I think you had a comment?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate all the dialogue and presentation tonight and just the role that you're all playing. So Chris and your team, I just want to reaffirm what others have said, which is that you've done, from my perspective, an outstanding job. And, you know, the demarcation of education and how it's going to be performed, this is a historic time. And in my sense is that there's no going back, that there's going to be something that's going to be a permanent shift because of this, because of the lessons we're learning, because of the opportunities that arise from this. And, you know, I've got two, I guess they're seniors now, today was the last day of school, and that they are sleeping more than they ever would have the last two and a half months, right? And there's benefits to that. And so I just, I just think there's so much opportunity that before we get back up from COVID, right, when you get knocked down, as we have been as an institution and as a society, what can you pick up before you stand back up? And I appreciate the work that your team is doing. And I feel like in the narrow, where everyone is a self-proclaimed expert, that we have a team and a group of leaders that are as expert as most anyone. And the more that we can get the word out to help empower other schools and other parts of the world about what we're doing and what we're striving for imperfectly, but I think with great intent and thoughtfulness throughout is really something that would be important for us to think about because it's where we're headed more and more. It's where we are, whether we wanted this or not. And so I just want to encourage that. I know, the communications team has done an outstanding job. And the more that we collaborate and have them help flesh out what these thought leadership pieces are, I can't help but slip into P R Es because that's what I do. And so thank you for what you're doing. And, you know, I'm learning to look into this dot as one example. I'm doing a workshop in a week, in six days, on this platform. And I'm doing like all sorts, I'm doing stuff that you're, you know, the teachers were doing April 1st to get ready for this April 9th PD, right? And so I'm with you on that. And I appreciate all that we're trying to do as we juggle to getting back into that building as well. Thank you.
Anybody else? Greg?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I just, I want to beg your forgiveness for a few more seconds. I want to personally thank Michael Carriachio, who's retiring this year. His leadership and his mentorship has led us to where we are today and enabled us to do the work that we are doing. So truly appreciate his contribution to our school.
Absolutely. This is still my thunder. I was just going to talk about how prophetic Mike was in the whole one-to-one. He really helped pioneer that for our school. And I don't, I mean, I can't even imagine where we'd be right now if we hadn't done that. And we've had three years of runway to kind of get us to where we are now. And it's still been hard. But you guys have really done an amazing job. And this is always one of my favorite presentations, is the tech presentations, but this time especially so. You guys have been just astoundingly successful in this. I had just one question. Did we discover that any families were struggling with internet access that we didn't previously know about? Or has that been pretty seamless?
Yeah. So I apologize, I don't have the stats at my fingertips, but they were relatively low. We're talking single digits of families that reached out to us when we went to remote learning who needed access points and we supplied those immediately. We're continuing with our program, which is during registration, there's a question as to whether families don't have internet at home. And if they indicate that they do, they seamlessly through the distribution process get a hotspot. If any parent or a counselor comes to us saying that a family is in need, a student is in need, they get a hotspot, no questions asked. We've just, we put it in order. We have enough for now. And we have an order for more for the coming year as well. So that's where we're at with that.
Great. That's great news. Anybody, any other comments from anyone else? Okay. All right. Well, thank you guys so much. This is really, you deserve a nice long vacation. You can't go anywhere, but you know, you deserve it. So thank you so much for this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. The board has not been going for three hours. So I suggest we take, you know, seven minute break to Jackie's favorite number and come back at like 9:35, if that's okay. Okay. All right. See you guys in a little bit. Back and who isn't. I do see Tom. But if other board members, as they come back, could turn their cameras on, I know Ralph can, but that would be helpful. So I can kind of see who's here. Thanks.
It's Stormin'.
I'm here.
Great. Thank you.
I think everybody may be back.
Was that the penultimate again?
Okay, let's, let's go for it. I just keep counting to seven over and over again and never quite getting there. So I say, let's go ahead and start because we've got a lot left.
Okay, so I will start with the next agenda item. And this is the academic supports for students making this presentation. It's Dr. Laurie Fiorenza, Director of Student Learning, Kristin McKee, Coordinator of Learning, Alan Lilix, Analytic Support, and Greg Johnson, Associate Superintendent. This item is for information and discussion. It is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Two, Transformative Education, and in compliance with District Policy Six Colon Forty. I'll turn it over.
Before I turn this over to the rest of the team, I want to say two quick things. First of all, we have talked about creating a more structured system of supports for our students for a while, ever since I've been in the district. And pulling something like this together and getting us in a situation where we can launch into this in the time that we have is really the product of the incredible team that we've been able to assemble in an incredibly short amount of time. So if you take a look at the people who will be presenting in just a few moments here, the longest tenured of any of them in the current position that they have in the district is Laura Fiorenza, who a year ago, right now, wasn't even working for the district. So my hat really goes off to this crew who's done exceptional work. And I also want to add one more presenter to this group. Alexis Iliadi is here as well to help present. She is our RTI coordinator, who took on the responsibilities that Kristin McKee left when she took her current position as our Coordinator of Learning Analytics. So with that said, I want to turn it over to.
Thank you so much. So we are going to talk to you about that we are restructuring and some supports that we're adding. The foundation that we use at Oak Park is called the multi-tiered systems of support. And the reason we do that is because it's a structured approach where we're going to use data intentionally to provide appropriate supports to students based on their needs. So M T S S is grounded in equity because it takes data qualitative and quantitative, and it aligns the most intense support with the most intense needs. So as you hear, we will see or hear a lot of conversation about exit and entrance criteria. We are going to work really diligently. We have a great system set up that we will make sure that the right students get into the right supports and get the services that they need. And we'll share with you some progress monitoring we're going to be doing to make sure that all of those things take place. If you could go to the next slide. Thank you. So our tiers of support, we want to kind of just frame it in the way people learn. So when you learn something, you might have some background knowledge. You have some prior learning. You then have these experiences where it can begin to connect things or begin to allow you to grapple with things so that eventually you make meaning and you learn the new skill. Well, this is where some of our tiers of support come in. So I'll start with tier one actually and work backwards around the wheel the opposite way. So with tier one supports, we know that eighty percent of our students are getting exactly what they need in core instruction. Tier one support is only utilized when students are struggling to make sense of something, but in a healthy way. So the teacher may need to re-explain something, or a student may just need to ask a question to get some clarification. That is very much a tier one support that can be provided so that the student can make sense of their learning. And then they move on to the next thing. However, a student that has some background knowledge, that's had some experiences or engaged in some opportunities in the classroom, but just can't seem to come to that dissonant stage, they're going to need a tier two support. And that tier two support is going to be short, but it's going to be a little more intense than just asking a question or a teacher coming alongside. It might look something like some type of tutoring that will help that student go ahead and make meaning. Our tier three support is for students who definitely don't have the background knowledge or those prerequisite skills they need to even get to the place where the experiences can help them to grapple to make meaning. So that's really how we want to look at our tiered support systems. And as we began to do some good reflection, Kristin McKee and myself sat down and used a tool to really evaluate where the building was relative to the tiers of support. And we noticed a few things were lacking. So we did make a few trips to some other schools to see how they did things. And we sort of pulled the best of everything from a couple of places. And we looked at how we could restructure those things in our own building using no additional staff and provide more access to our students than they were currently receiving. So that is what you're going to see in the next few slides. More access to support for our students. The next slide, Greg? Or whoever's clicking, sorry. I assumed it was Greg. So our first support is academic enrichment. This is strictly a restructuring. We currently have this support. It is serving in the tutoring center as a tier two and tier three. So there was a mix of kids who had executive functioning skill issues, who had organizational issues, who couldn't really prioritize and get their work completed. They were sort of thrown into the same room. And that made it very difficult to really get the right support to the right students. So we have broken that apart. And we have our first executive functioning skill support tier two intervention that we're going to be presenting. I'll let Kristin kind of explain the criteria.
Hi, everyone. I want to also just reiterate that this is, what we did with this is very much in response to the needs that we are seeing over the years. As you all know, I've been coordinating a lot of supports and working with the P S S teams. And these restructures were definitely in response to the needs that we are seeing. And so for this intervention, we're going to be looking at our entrance and exit criteria around the current classroom performance, the teacher feedback that really provides the areas of impact of the key parts of executive functioning. We'll look, we'll use this information to determine the appropriateness of intervention. And we'll also collect data to help us determine when the student can exit and also how to phase out that intervention for that student. The intervention is very focused on gaining a skill. So it's a, it's a, it's a skill-driven intervention where they'll be taught skills, but then they'll also develop a plan that will work for them. I think, which is something I've learned over the years about executive functioning is that it really has to be what works for a person. It's not a one size fits all. And so the students will be, again, will be looking at the areas that they have the deficits in around the executive functioning and then develop the ongoing plan as we exit them. Then I think Alexis, were you going to talk about the P S S process a bit?
So just a little bit about the P S S process and what this will look like in terms of how we're identifying our students. Our P S S teams are meeting every week to review the data. And so during these meetings, we have a multidisciplinary approach. We've got Dean's, social workers, counselors, myself sitting at the table. Make sure that we're pairing the right students with the right interventions. So as Kristin said, we're looking at that classroom profile. We're looking at the gradebook data. And we're using this to make sure that we are also keeping equity at the forefront of what we're thinking about by using the data to make those decisions instead of just a referral process. We want to make sure that we're pairing the intensity of the need with the appropriate service. And then we are also going to be doing constant progress monitoring to evaluate how students are doing once they're in the intervention. So we don't ever want an intervention to be a holding pattern for any student. We want this to be an ongoing evaluation of have we remediated the skill? Is the student ready to exit the intervention? Or are we looking at the student needing more support?
You can go to the next slide. So in breaking academic enrichment apart, we saw a need for a tier three intervention, which we're going to be calling mentor study. And the reason for that is because this, this service, this support, needs to be a little more intense. So more like a case management versus the tier two where students are going to come, they're going to build skill. It's a lot, it's fluid, it's a lot faster. This tier three intervention is going to be a smaller group and a lot more intense because of a higher intensive need. I think one of the things I just want to share really quickly is by using this M T S S system and moving kids more fluidly, identifying them proactively, we're trying to get away from kind of this idea that academic enrichment or any other service or support is a place. But instead, it's a service that's provided based on a need, based on a skill that is progress monitored so that students can move out of the support and into a regular classroom atmosphere, fully capable, fully fledged and ready to tackle the academics. Kristin, you can go ahead and talk about the criteria.
Since this is a tier three intervention, students will most likely have been involved with other interventions already. So we would have known them and been looking at them and monitoring them already and acknowledging when it was time to give them this type of intervention. We will be using our early warning system data to look at what students are presenting with the most need. This is, because this is an intensive intervention, it's going to be closely monitored. And when exit criteria is looked at, we're going to make sure that there's a phase out plan that provides decreasing levels of support. Because we know one of the things that happens is that students start doing well because of the intervention. And then if you don't strategically reduce it, you know, their skills might not have it generalized, even though you thought that they did. So because of the intensity will make that really individualized. And then we will be having the curriculum, some evidence-based curriculums. We'll have School Connect. We'll be using the Russian or behavioral. We'll be working with our social work teams. And again, really trying to enhance that student, teacher, parent collaboration as well.
Go to the next slide. So the next service that we're going to be adding is the math enrichment center. This is a tier two intervention. We currently have tier two interventions in math, specifically pre-algebra and the block class, which is for students who have skill deficits that require ongoing support to close those gaps. The math enrichment center, or MEC as we're probably going to end up calling it, is really targeted tutoring for students with a specific skill gap that can be resolved more quickly, allowing the student to not need access to a full class. So this will be a new tier two intervention that we're adding. But again, it's not taking new staff. We're just restructuring the staff that we currently have. This will be available, I believe, five periods a day, simply because it's a pilot and we're just going to try it out. Kristin, you want to share the criteria then?
So I just want to say I'm really excited about this intervention. This has been something that I have been wanting to see happen for a long time. I have experience with this type of intervention in previous lives. And so I'm really excited that we're able to offer a flexible intervention that is still remains targeted and it can still utilize a real intervention process without being a class. So I just want to state that this is something I've been wanting to see for a while. So I really appreciate the effort that went in. When Lori came in, we did our evaluation and she said, this needs to happen. We have to make this happen. And so like she said, we visited schools, we looked at how they were doing it, and we started taking the best and creating our own. So what we'll be doing is really looking for those students who are not quite at that college and career-ready standard. So we have a lot of students in sort of that approaching range that while they can participate in grade level math classes, they might have gaps that just prevent them. they might have gaps that just prevent them from, and what can happen as we know in math is that you, you get behind and you start spiraling down and it gets, it can become challenging. And then all of a sudden it looks like they're struggling with math, when really a gap kind of caused that. So what we'll want to do is look for those gaps and use a lot of the data we'll have, which is the gradebook data, summative assessments, STAR assessments, teacher recommendations. And then to make sure we're identifying those students who are, again, in that range around, they're not, they might be in a grade level type of course, but they're not really meeting that expectation right now because of that gap. And not because of a broad, broad skill level where a lot of pre-teaching and reteaching is required on a daily basis. They just need that gap remedied. So we'll be looking at those students as well and then the resolution of that gap. And then also some diagnostics can also happen if we're starting to notice. And that's where Alexis will be working closely with the teacher and myself. Is there isn't diagnostics, so we start saying, hey, this might be more than just a gap. Then we'll be able to make a move from there. But if it is just a gap, then they will, they should be able to seamlessly transition back into their class. And then also, you know, know that there's a resource and know that maybe we can say, hey, this is where the tutoring center is and we can give them a plan and a path to say, when you start getting stuck, these are the things that you can do for yourself. And then build that relationship with another adult in the building, which is always a good thing.
Go to the next slide. So this is another pilot that we're going to be trying. It's called the literacy resource center. It is a tier one support, which means it's for all students. We are, I'm really excited about this one because this one will eventually be something we will be looking to do at each grade level. So first, we just want to start with our ninth grade health courses. And we're looking at really a couple of things. One is literacy skill instruction. It's direct instruction on one specific literacy skill that Kristin will work with health teachers and the literacy resource center teacher to identify based on data, an area that students are struggling with that's keeping them from accessing literacy skills. And the teacher in that literacy resource center will be teaching students a skill. And at the same time, the literacy teacher is teaching the skill to the students, the teachers are benefiting from a sort of coaching from that literacy resource center teacher. So we're getting multiple, multiple things accomplished in one, one resourced spot. In addition to that, we're also going to be looking at a specific writing skill. As you see, there are some examples. These were some of our ideas about how to move along. The idea eventually, if it works, with each grade level. So for example, working with all sophomore classes who have to write a speech in history in their sophomore year. Maybe they, the whole sophomore class cycles through the literacy resource center where the teacher is giving direct instruction. Juniors, a research paper, seniors, a college essay. In addition to this, we are also looking at incorporating digital literacy. So this is a space where Matt McMurray and I have had conversation about him working with the health teachers and the literacy resource center. So we're bringing literacy into a larger scope. So it's not just about accessing texts, but it's about being a literate person, which means books, texts, digital, all kinds of things. And eventually, which I don't know how long eventually is, but the place that we, we went to and saw their resource center, they had about 100 peer tutors that were each on the wall. And on the wall under their picture was their availability. And students could sign up to access a peer tutor. And these peer tutors went through training. It was a very, very well-established rigorous opportunity for student leaders. And so on my, on my list of things, that is something that I'm really, really excited to bring, but I'm trying to be patient. So go ahead, Kristin.
I'm super excited about this too. And the school we went to was actually smaller than ours and they had that many tutors because, which is awesome. But I also think this is an opportunity for us to do good and well at the same time. Because a lot of times onboarding of new teachers can be difficult. If we've done like a big literacy push and we, you know, trained our whole staff and we get these new teachers and we've had years where we've had tons of new teachers. And if we're not doing ongoing training. And so what I think is when you have a rich literacy resource center and you have this, this ongoing capacity building through really relevant parts of curriculum, then I think that it's a continuous onboarding and it's continuously skill development, rather than just one big PD push and then everyone's onto the next thing. So this is what really excites me about, about really building capacity, which is I think a critical, critical aspect of MTSS that I think we'd be remiss if we didn't constantly look at that for all parts of our MTSS model.
Absolutely. It's very exciting. We can go to the next slide. So this is a support that we currently have at the high school. In the past, this is very, very exciting news. In the past, there was one West Forty interventionist who served 32 students. And when I came and Kristin and I began to talk and we began to look at that EWS data and really pull apart the number of students that, as you can see, the entrance criteria is attendance and multiple Ds and Fs. So as we started to look at that data and identify, this is our most at-risk population. These are the students who have so many Ds and Fs, who don't come to school, who are desperately at risk of dropping out of school and are typically our black and brown students. We had a conversation with West Forty due to some, some staffing changes. Our current, our interventionist resigned and so we had an opportunity to hire another. And I just took the chance of asking if we could have more than one. And because it's a grant and we don't have to pay for it, we got a second, we got a second interventionist. So now we have two interventionists working with 64 of our most at-risk students. Doing a lot of different things. I'm going to let Kristin talk about it, but it, it's hard not to talk about it because these are two absolutely amazing and incredible people who have done phenomenal work since they've been with Oak Park since, I believe, probably November.
October, December.
Yeah. Oh, it's been fabulous. But go ahead, Kristin, you talk about it.
No. So I just want to, you know, this is a case management where they're really connecting. It's not a place, it's not a class. It's really, it's really, they're finding the time when they can. They walk kids to class. We have an interventionist who's amazing and he has a, you know, in the Oak Park weight room, they meet in the morning, lift some weights. But they really are doing what they can to reach out and connect to these families as well. It's a very, West Forty has a very intensive structure for their, their ALOP grant that, and so we have West Forty support through it too, which is really nice to have that partnership. So this support can be layered on top of other supports. So the West Forty interventionists, they do also work with our social workers. They're going to, they will work with the academic enrichment. They will work with the in-school credit recovery teacher. They'll, they work with everybody across the school. Because again, this is a layered support. And I think it's also been a support that's been critical for our students with attendance issues because those are very difficult students to support with programming. It really is that outreach is really working with those families. So they meet at least twice a week with students. They track their students' attendance daily and they monitor their academic progress pretty rigorously, actually. So there's a lot that they are doing actually for their grant, but it's actually given us a lot of insight on how we want to say, hey, there's a really good ideas and we're going to start using some of the way they track their data and some of our more intensive interventions as we build this out. So it's been a pretty successful year with this. We, like, like Lori said, we kind of revamped who our target audience kid has. And then to be fair, the grant has changed a lot since we first interact, started interacting with the grant. So West Forty's envisioning of it allowed us to do this as well. So this has been another really outstanding thing that was happening this year. And I know the West Forty people have been working with their families and their students remotely as well. So that's been ongoing as well.
So all of the interventions that we've talked about up to this point are interventions that Alexis will be meeting with these interventionists monthly to look at the data, to help them, look at the data, but decide what data to even be collecting in some cases, to really make sure we are monitoring students' progress, being responsive to their needs, adding or subtracting support, gradually releasing, just really ensuring that we are staying on top of our data collection and our progress monitoring so that our intervention system works for the most at-risk, most needy students. The next intervention or the support, if someone could move to the next slide. So this is another intervention. I used to be an interventionist, so all of the interventions are near and dear to my heart now. So that's probably why I keep saying it's my favorite. But through my work with the P4SS parent group, it came to my attention that there were some concerns relative to athletes, particularly our black and brown athletes, who due to grade requirements, never got off of athletic study table and as a result, weren't always able to participate in their sport. And we know that sports is often what keeps a lot of our kids engaged in school, coming to school. It gives them purpose and reason. So once we had that conversation, I began to talk with our athletic director and the assistant athletic director to see how I could, or some support that I had, could come alongside of what they were already doing. As athletic director and his assistant, they, they had a very rigorous, as is required. But the assistant director of athletic director has been phenomenal in really trying to make sure that she follows the students, that, that she's on top of their grades, that she meets with them, she, she sometimes studies with them. And so I was looking for a way that I could assist and meet some of the needs of, of another population. And so athletic study table is, the criteria is really any student that has, any student athlete that has one or one D or one F in a class, they have to, by IHSA rules, they have to be assigned a certain number of hours. So those students go to a study table or the tutoring center. It's, it's oversight, but not intensive. It's just oversight, they come, they serve their time, somebody signs the slip. And that's really, that works for some kids. But as we move to the next slide, there are a group of kids that have multiple Ds and Fs that really do require a lot more oversight. They require assistance with EF, EF skills. They require assistance with mapping, planning and prioritizing their work. And so we put into place in the next slide, the targeted resource center for athletes. And so we're using a current staff member who is in the tutoring center. Again, as I said, this is multiple Ds and Fs. They are still assigned IHSA hours. But now they go into a room with the teacher, Susannah Lara, and she assists them in prioritizing their work, in setting goals and organizing, in ensuring that they have a system of how they approach things. We started this roughly about January. And as you know, we left in March, so we only were able to do it about two and a half months. In the two and a half months, Susannah had 13 students that were required to come to her for targeted resource. Of course, the, the sports that are during the January, February time are much smaller than the sport, track or football, if we would have grabbed those two. So understandably, the population is, is small, but she had incredible success. So of the 13 students, all of them had success. Six of them continued to come to her even when they didn't have to. So once their study table hours were over, they continued to come and see her. Let me see, I just want to make sure I read her. One, one student in particular had four Fs. And in a matter of two weeks, coming four times a week, he was able to get all of those grades up to passing. Another student brought up three Fs. And one of those Fs was in a class that parents were prepared to pay for a private tutor for. So these students are continuing to come, not only out of relationship with Ms. Lara, but because there's now accountability and a reference person to really help them navigate the nuances of planning and organizing and setting goals and, and even reaching out and talking and advocating for themselves with a teacher. Some students, that is very difficult. And so our plan is to, at some point, when we get back into a more normal school situation and we have athletics, is to continue to pilot this and watch and, and collect data and see how successful this is. Our intent would be if it is successful, to increase the number of staff members that could potentially provide this targeted resource for our athletes. And, and I do have some ideas on who that could be and how we could utilize our current staff in our tutoring center. But again, I think the fact that half of the students that didn't need to come anymore, continue to come, is a really good indication of their motivation and, and desire to do well in school. So those are our supports that we are planning for the next school year. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a question, Lori.
Yeah.
Sarah, can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
It's two questions, actually. One, you said that you have two interventionists right now who are working with 60 students?
Correct.
And that ratio, like, is that fruitful? Or would it be beneficial to have more interventionists?
So through West Forty, two was what we could have. And the, the number of students per staff member is set by West Forty. So they came to us with the, they can have 32 people on their caseload.
As you're looking at the plans moving forward, are you thinking to create a plan where you would actually have more outside of what West Forty's framework is?
You know, to be really honest, I, I think I personally, I need to collect more data. And they're since November. They've done a lot, but then we left in March. So I would just, I would prefer to collect a little more data non-pandemic and see really what, what is the sustainability of that? If that makes sense.
Thank you. I'm, I'm highly appreciative of this MTSS report and the framework. So thank you for it. The other question that I had is a lot of times we know that the students that are having, that, you know, do end up in that level two, tier two system, have a lot of social, emotional learning aspects or different traumas going on in their world as well. And I didn't really hear much in your conversation about that aspect of it. So is that built in in some way with these interventionists? Is it part of the plan? Is it an upcoming piece or?
So I can speak to that, do you know, you know, I, for the past, I don't know, eight years, nine years, was facilitating the PSS process, which has the social worker and counselors and deans. And so we, when we look at these interventions, we're not looking at them isolated. We're looking at them more holistically. So if a student requires social work, they always can get social work on top of these interventions. In fact, I think that that's sometimes the best. We try to make sure, again, it's in the response, response of the need. And so like you said, if there's a tier two student who's, who might have some social, emotional, then they probably will collaborate with that executive functioning. Sure. Because a lot of times the social worker will be actually the person that will help us with the phase out, who will continue to do some check-ins on a regular basis. So it really is through a PSS team process where every part of that team kind of has their multidisciplinary insight on what the kid needs. And so we, we make sure that the kid's connected to whatever interventions that they need and whatever level and, and make sure it's appropriate.
I'm so appreciative of that. It's making me think also about how sometimes students get stigmatized when they move into a tier two or tier three support. And it sounds as if you're doing the work to ensure that they understand that this is a fluid movement and it's not a, you know, you don't become part of that group that goes to the fourth floor or whatever.
That's always a part of the conversation, for sure. Because some kids, it doesn't bother them and some kids, it really does.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate this report.
Well.
Hi, this Jackie. First of all, thank you all. This is, the energy around this presentation is infectious. And, you know, Lori, it's hard to believe that this is your first year with all the things you've just talked about. You've been able to facilitate our staff and seeing, and, you know, community with even the P4SS that you talked about. So thank you. And Kristin, I'm so grateful that you are taking over this whole area because the same intensity and intentionality around just data, but doing evidence-based practices and being so committed to relationship building now is benefiting truly the entire school. So this has always been one of my most inspiring, inspiring presentations. And I always feel like I learn a lot. So thank you all. And Alexis, you too, you're the newest member. So thank you all for, for this presentation. It was very insightful and hopeful in the work that we're doing with our students.
Jackie, I just want to tell you that I appreciate that because I know over the years, we've had conversations. But I want to tell you that I couldn't be more excited to find. to finally have a really strong team around me that all have experience with interventions and all have worked at this level. When Alexis took the role, I felt like, oh my gosh, this is happening. And when Lori showed up, I think on like day two that I met her, I sat her down and made her do a 30-page MTSS evaluation. And so, and because I was just so tired of this, I just wanted to move. And I was like,
I know you have.
She was game, so I just wanted to.
You all have done, yeah, you all have done so much. Who knew? Well, I knew, but thank goodness that the team is ready and able. So this is greatness. Yeah.
Anyone else? I just want to thank you guys. I talked to Dr. Fiorezza about this, so she knows. But this is like goosebumpy, it's so exciting. But I also want to say, like, Parents for Student Success, like, they also really played a big role in this. And I think we'd be, they've been called out, but I just want to do it myself as a liaison for that committee this past year. Like, I was so impressed with the dedication of those parents and those moms, frankly, who were just really focused on getting that athletic table up and running and dogged. I mean, they were great. So thank you to all of you. This is just super exciting, and I cannot wait to see what you do next year. You set a bad precedent here, you guys, right? High expectations now, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone. The next item is the Project One budget update. Coming forward to make this presentation is Mr. Mike Carriello, Chief Operations Officer, Josh Krasnack, FGM Architect, and Josh Warner from Pepper Construction. This item is for discussion only. It is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority for Facilities and Operations, Facilities and Finance, and District Policy 7:170 and 4:150.
Thank you, Dr. Prude Adams. Could we go to the presentation, please? I'd have to, also have to acknowledge my colleagues here in the work that's been done for this presentation and frankly, the work that's been done on this project to date. There's been a lot of twists and turns, and I want to, you know, call out my team on the OPRF side, Fred Proust, Jeff Bergman, Chris Thiem, and also on the FGM side, Josh Cerniak. And on the Pepper side, Josh Warner and Lance Trich, who may also be speaking this evening. So I also want to call out Cindy Sador, who's been very helpful in putting these numbers together. And I will invite all my colleagues as I go through this presentation. If there's something I leave out or you think I should be highlighting, please feel free to jump in and help me out. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So this evening, I'm going to try to take the bundling we did when we put the five-year plan, the five-year, I'm sorry, the 10-year capital improvement plan, the health, life, safety, and the Project One work, and we put them together. And it made perfect sense to put them together because the work is interrelated in a great, great, to a great, great extent. So we really made a whole lot of sense to put it together, but I really felt this evening, I had to try to peel that apart so that you could really, we as a group could really see the contribution of Project One and where Project One was falling short in terms of the money that had been allocated. So when we review the budget, I'm going to start by looking back to the initial estimate we did in September of 2019. And then I'll bring you up to date in terms of where we are today. And this, again, as I'll reiterate, this is really just a Project One view. Next month, my hope is, based on guidance we'll get from the board this evening, to bring a complete picture back of the capital expenditures. But I need, I think the team needs guidance from the board on how to proceed, specifically on the Project One work that we're going to be doing. One other thing that we're going to cover, the two options as I see them, are really to look at the scope of Project One and make some tough decisions on whether we want to eliminate scope, reduce scope, or possibly look at the budget and get some relief in terms of additional funding for Project One. And it's not an either/or, there's certainly a middle ground there too. But I think when we look at the significance of some of the cuts that are on the table, and we looked at the significance of the shortfall, we felt as a team that we really needed to come to the board to get the board's perspective on how to proceed. Okay, can we go to the next slide, please? So this is the original presentation that we made back in September at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. And the gray boxes on the far left are really the initial estimates that were provided by the work done by Perkins and Will and the Imagine team. So those were the original estimates then. If you look at the bottom, you'll see that Project One subtotal was $32.6 million. That's really the number that was the budget that we're really going to talk about tonight. There's a few items below that line. We're really not going to talk about those this evening. But if you think back to that timeframe, we were pointing out even at that point that we had a shortfall. And in this case, you can see the shortfall is almost 9%, 8.83% looking to the far right, down at the bottom. That was attributable to a number of factors, which we did talk about at that time. If we go to the next slide, I'm not going to go into detail of these items. But there were a number of items that were reasons why we felt that there was a shortfall. And we identified those at the time. And our hope at that time was, since we were at the very beginning of the project, that we, as we got into the detailed design, as we got into the bidding, that we would find some way to actually capture, come back a little bit, gain some benefit and not have these shortfalls. Unfortunately, that did not happen. We actually encountered many things that were not anticipated. And an example I will give you is, as we really got into the foundation of the building and we were looking at what we had to do to make the current, when we took down the current South Cafeteria, we knew we had some sort of a soil problem because of the fact that the concrete floor was buckling, which led to a wall shifting in the current cafeteria floor with a big crack in it. We knew that there was a problem. As we got into it, we saw the extent of the problem was greater than we thought. So things like that, as you get into it, you can see there's things that are unanticipated that actually caused us not to be able to recoup these numbers, but actually to fall further behind. And if we can move to the next slide, please? So I'm going to point, I'm going to draw your attention to that first section. You can see where that blue arrow is pointing. So this section here, Mr. Kowski, this is not exactly the running total. It's, I do have a running total for you. You will get that next month when we come back to you. You'll see the running total of what we've anticipated, what was originally budgeted, and where the bids have come in at. So I'll have that for you next time. But I want to point out this top section. This top section is strictly the Student Resource Center and the new South Cafeteria. Okay? So you'll see the numbers in the total cost column. Those are the numbers which the various bids came in on. And what you'll see is, actually, I want to point out the SRC in South Cafeteria, Bid Package 4. That last item, which you can see is about 13.7 million there. That actually has been broken into two separate bid packages. So we had to, we actually had to break it into two from a timing consideration. So that you'll see a Bid Package 4 and a Bid Package 5 coming. But the reality is, all those other bid packages have come in and have been approved. Bid Packages 4 and 5 are still to be approved. But we feel pretty comfortable with that number, that $5.3 million of a variance right there. So you can see, just in the SRC and in the South Cafeteria, we're looking at a deficit of about $5.3 million. And in case you're wondering about that 3.6 million that's sitting above the total, that is, we took money from the capital improvement. We took capital improvement dollars to put a basement in there with the understanding that if we didn't get that storage and didn't get that basement done now, it would never be done. So that number goes in at the top. And if you go right to the bottom, where it says the original project total, we took that 3.6 million out there. So you can see that the number does foot to the $32.6 million that was the original budget. So I now want to, so the point I want you to take away from this is that 5.3 is probably the closest number, the best number you're going to see on this page because we're furthest along. That number is completely designed out. The work that is represented by that number has all been designed and is either, has been already bid and accepted, or the bids are out on the street right now for that. So that's the best number on the sheet. As you go down to the other key components of scope, you can see that the only one that's under budget is the Commons and Main Entrance. Everything else is over budget. And that's before we've even done the detailed analysis. Hopefully, those numbers will hold up, and maybe they'll even get better. But our experience has been, they typically don't get better. So going to the bottom line, if you look where the red circle is, you can see at this moment, we're sitting around $8.3 million over budget. Initially, we were about, you saw it was about 8.9% over. That really was, that number really wasn't accurate because that number included the capital improvement dollars. It also included the health, life, safety dollars. So if you pulled those two numbers out on the previous page, that 9% would really have grown to about 14%. So the Project One component of the September analysis was really about 14% over budget. This particular analysis, which is not including of capital improvements and health, life, safety, is about 26% over budget. Big, big number to try to come back from. We can go to the next slide, please? So the team has been working, and we've actually done this in multiple iterations, on what potential items could be reduced, modified, or taken out of scope altogether. And we've actually reported to, since September, on some of these items. And we actually handled them as considering them as alternates. And the alternate being, we wouldn't make it part of the base bid, but in the case where the bids came in extremely favorable, we might have an opportunity to accept those alternates. So the items that we originally considered to try to get that 8 million down within range of where we want to be, which is the 32.6 total budget, the items that we are considering, we originally considered were that kind of cool second-floor balcony bridge that went over from the current balcony to the auditorium. We were suggesting taking that out. We had a number of skylights to bring more light into various parts of the building. We pulled those out. We actually made some choices on finishes, not going with the top-of-the-line hard finish, but actually going to a good finish, but not really something that we had done in other parts of the building to try to save money. We went to less expensive finishes. The servy, which is something that was not considered, but we felt was important to at least think about, was an item that we pulled out. Now, the complication with the servy is a foundation, that foundation complication I spoke of earlier. The soil underneath the servy is bad. So, you know, obviously, we don't, when we take the existing building down, that would be the time to fix the soil underneath the existing servy. You can't fix the soil under the existing servy unless you demolish that existing servy. And once you demolish the existing servy, you got to build a new servy. So that's an item that we can just say, we're going to just deal with the soil as it is and try to work, come up with some workaround. But that's the sort of thing that we're running into as we're going through this project. But we, for the purposes of this analysis, we pulled the servy out because we felt we needed those dollars to actually try to get within budget. And then last but not least, we listed this item as an alternate. The last time we spoke to you, is really reducing the number of classrooms by 25%, okay? So if you look at making all of those changes, you're gaining back about 3.4, 3.5 roughly of the $8 million, okay? So we knew that wasn't enough, so we went and looked further at some other things that were things that we could actually pull out of the scope. And by the way, none of this is really, this is, the first section is really reflected in the way we did our bidding process. We can certainly go back and include any of these items. Nothing has really truly been cut. And we really wanted the board's perspective before we took some steps that would be, that we couldn't go back. The one thing I will tell you is, we need a definite decision on the servy because we're getting to the point where we're going to knock the building down, and we need to know what to do with excavation of the soil. So that's the top part. I'm going to pause for a second, take a breath. The second part is, we felt that because we didn't have enough money to get us close enough to where we needed to be to meet our $32.6 million budget, we looked at taking the ADA elevator out of the north end of the building. Now, we put an ADA elevator in the Student Resource Center, but our plan was to actually take the freight elevator, which is at the far north end of the building, and convert that into yet another ADA-accessible elevator. So we pulled that, we pulled that out of the equation. And then we also pulled out of the equation the all-gender toilet rooms. And one of the things I want to just talk about for a moment with the all-gender toilet rooms, they are, you know, we talked about bundling in the beginning. For the purposes of this analysis, I tried to the best of my ability to really separate the costs. But it's very difficult to do that. And the example I would point out to you is the all-gender toilet rooms. By virtue of doing the all-gender toilet rooms, you've got to tap into the plumbing risers. And the plumbing risers are a terrible shape. So you can't tap into these risers without replacing the plumbing risers. The plumbing risers, to replace them, is a million dollars' worth of work. So, you know, you get into something, you can't just estimate the cost of the new item. You really have to look at fitting that new item into the existing old infrastructure of the building. But assuming we basically took those two items off the scope, we would gain another roughly $2 million, which still leaves us about 2.8, almost $2.9 million short. So what's left? The only things left are looking at what we had planned to do for the Commons and Main Entrance, the classrooms, the special education and husky pup swap to actually make that sped facility up to, to bring that up to par with renovations. So really, that's all that's left. As you can see, the bulk of the cost really is in that new facility, that new Student Resource Center and South Cafeteria. So can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, so I think the way I see this, and where we need the board's help is, I'm going to portray these as two distinct things, but I will say to you, it's not an either/or. In one case, it's very clear, we do not have enough budget to do what was originally conceived of in the master plan that was the Imagine project and the estimates that were accepted as our budget. The $32.6 million is not enough to do the scope of what we need to do. So I tried to show this by taking the capital improvement dollars out and really just looking at the contribution of Project One to the shortfall. So we basically looked at scope and we looked at things that we could potentially take away. And the cuts were extremely significant. So the team did not feel comfortable with moving forward without really coming back to the board to say, okay, folks, what do we want to do here? So, you know, we're not saying we should cut any of these things. These are just examples of things that we could cut. So we need help from the board with respect to, are there items on here that you feel are necessities? And if so, how do we reconcile the fact that we really don't have sufficient funding to get those items done? So, last slide, please? Okay, next month, and I'll circle back, we'll talk about that next, about the prior slide. But next month, we're actually going to bring you a modified version of the capital improvement plan. We're going to, we've actually taken, and we're going to go back and look at the numbers there and try to get some dollars pulled out of that budget. So we can, we actually have to put everything back together now. But I wanted you to understand the impact of Project One. And then we will come back to you with an entire construction budget modified based upon the feedback we have this evening. And we'll also be bringing Bid Package 4, which, there'll be one more bid package after this, and that'll be coming in August. So that is my presentation, and I would now open it up for comments and questions.
Sarah, Gina, have a question?
Sure.
To say that I'm disappointed is kind of an understatement right now. I understand that when we, when we undertook this, we knew that there were things that were going to come up, but there are certain things that are coming up that I feel like could have been part of the original conversation in a different way. And I'm challenged by no all gender bathrooms. That seems like, that's not okay. I'm challenged by fewer special ed classroom support pieces, not like those, that feels not okay. I know that we have a finite amount of money and that there's, and you know, there's, I just feel like there's, there are some places that to, for us to make those cuts in those spaces, those are deep and hard places. And I know that we've talked, I know that Ralph has actually mentioned this numerous times about the twice a year check, you know, conversations around the capital improvement project and us being more informed about it and having more frequent review of it. This, this feels, I have to admit, a little bit blindsiding based on the conversations that we've had recently. And tho, those two pieces for me though, the, the all gender bathrooms and the, and then the servary, can you just explain me, explain that to me that again? So the servary was not considered? And then now that it is, now that you realize that there's a problem underneath it, that now it is being considered? Because it seems like the servary, when we were talking about that original structure, would have been part of the conversation to me. And I'm not an expert in this area by any means, but we were talking about like the cafe. So the servary seems like that's a big part of the cafe. So I'm, I'm not clear how that didn't come up until now, so, yeah, I'm, I'm experiencing some frustration.
So I want to interject before Mike speaks. When we first, back that November, prior to you becoming a member of the board, and we, we, we were hesitant to give a price because prices change. So that's one aspect of it. The other aspect is the fact that it was a different architect and it was a community group doing the work. When you have a building as old as Oak Park and River Forest High School, you uncover things as you begin to look to make renovations. The servary, when the, the proposal from the Imagine group came forward to do the cafeteria, the servary was not there. And looking at the design of the new cafeteria, we felt it important, how do you put in a new cafeteria and not add a new servary? And so actually, that was about forward, back in the fall, early fall, that the servary was missing and that there was a need for the servary. Over the course of this year, we did a utilization study. We did a lot of things that also uncovered some unknowns for us. And when we're told to stay within the proposed budget, that does require you have to look at what's cut. Now, maybe what's being cut may, maybe we look at something different of what's being cut, but that's how you get to this point. Also, with regards to regular updates to the board, and this may have been prior to your time, but Mike and his team bought for a proposal to cluster or to bundle everything so that there would, you'd have the capital improvements, you'd have project one, and you'd have life safety altogether. There was some discussion about if that should be that way or if that should not be that way. But every month, we give some type of update about capital improvements, and they bought project one. And so it was not intended for tonight to catch anybody off guard. It was just bringing those things back again. And we, because we've been looking, trying to see where we could shave, what we could do. And so we're finally at a point where we have to say, okay, we need some guidance. And so I, I just felt the need to, to say that, to kind of clear up maybe some misconceptions or some things that may have happened prior to you joining the board.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt-Adams. I appreciate that. And I do recall the conversations that we've had since we got started and some of this information, but I, I still, I still feel like there's pieces missing for me, but thank you.
I, I agree, you know, to cut the, the restrooms, I don't think when, when, when the previous company even looked at restrooms, that the consideration, yes, they needed to be replaced, but not thinking about what that looks like once you unearth some things. The same thing with the servary and the ground up under there. And so as I said earlier, a lot of times when you have a building as old as ours, and you start to do renovations, you uncover a lot of unknowns. I'm surprised they haven't come up with the old oil tanks down under the ground yet, which they might when they go to tear down the cafeteria.
It's actually in our 10-year plan, Joylyn, there is an oil tank that we have to get rid of.
Dr. Pruitt-Adams?
Yeah.
I would, I would like to say too, this is why Mike and his team and my team have been working about also looking at going to death certificates to help, you know, be able to pay for some of this. And that's, that's why we were presenting this last week, and we were trying to keep within the range of what this, this, these projects actually needed. So that's how we were really looking at, if, if, if the board said we were going to not do the, these projects, then that was one thing, but how would we get the funding? That's how also we were looking at it. We were trying to come, you know, strategically plan to do this.
So, so one, one thing I'd like to, to bring out, and, and again, this is, this is just the way it is. I'm just going to lay it out there. We, the team initially wanted to take and do the entire design of the project all at once, and then determine how to bid it out from that point. And the reason, one of the reasons why we wanted to do that is because we would then have the opportunity to do a prioritization with all of the knowledge versus this, do it a chunk at a time, and then see where you're landing it with that particular piece of the puzzle. So, you know, if we go back to that, that slide that had that blue arrow on it, you could see about five point, roughly 5.3 of, over 5 million of the 8 million is just in the student resource center. So what that means is that because of the fact that we, we were, we were actually directed by the board to, to break ground in June, and that basically threw us, we, when we had to break ground in June, we had to break the design into pieces. And that, it's fine, it made, it made sense for a lot of reasons to do that. But when you do that, you've now, you, you've now designed a piece of it, and when you commit to that piece of work, it limits your options down the road for other pieces of work. So the prioritization is now constrained by the fact that we've got a, a, a big chunk of the work, frankly, the lion's share of the work with that new building, that is not within parameters. So then that, that really has an impact to the other pieces of work that are coming downstream. So that's, that's part of what's, what we're dealing with here. It's not all of it. I think to, to Dr. Pruitt-Adams' point, the, there were things that were, were not considered when, when this master plan was done. It was a master plan. It wasn't meant to be a, a detailed design with, with, with a clear budget. But, but understanding, you know, funding is very tight. We want to try to do whatever we can to stay within the means of what the board is allocating for this project. So, so that's where the, the suggestions came in for what potentially could be cut. The board has total purview to say whatever they want. I mean, they can, you guys could tell us to do whatever you feel is appropriate. If there are things that should not be on the table to be cut, let us know, and then we'll have to come back and let you know what it's going to take to do those things. So I, I don't want to imply that there's any judgment about what's more important than others. We really were looking at things that were potential pieces that could be broken off and either done or not done.
I have a question, I, I have a, I don't know, a, a question and a comment. The comment is, I, I'm feeling some frustration, and it is feeling once again that, that cart before the, the horse feeling, that when the, the information that's being presented this evening, as well as the discussion that was had about, you know, going out for debt, was not contextualized in the way that I understood it around need that we're saying now. It was, it was put in a different context of spreading this out, and we're in such a good position financially. And this is, the way that this is showing up, I, that's, so I don't, that's my, I'm having some cognitive dissonance around, around that feeling as though things are not coming in the right order for my understanding, and maybe for others, it's fine. And the question I have is, with some, a lot of these items, I'm, I'm not understanding why we didn't anticipate and build in cost around the fact that we have such an old building and, for example, the, Mike, when you talked about the bathrooms, the all gender bathrooms and, you know, the plumbing, I, I couldn't imagine it would be ready to go, given that no, nothing's happened in that building since the 60s. So it's hard to understand how, how we're so far off 24%, you know, variance in a project that a lot of these structural issues, soil, all of those types of things, the plumbing, I just feel like I don't understand why that wasn't anticipated and, and how the team was, was making the, the recommendations based on those types of things. So I'm, I'm struggling with how we got here.
Let me, let me start, Dr. Moore, and I'd, I'd ask my colleagues if they'd like to chime in on this also. Part of my understanding is that the process that they went through, Perkins and Will and the Imagine team went through, was a master design process. And it was meant to give, to, to basically prioritize needs, to conceptualize what those needs might look like in terms of an implementation, but it wasn't necessarily meant to generate a detailed budget. Now, again, it's, it's silly to, it's, it's unrealistic to assume you could conceptualize something and not give a ballpark of what it might cost, right? So I could say, here's this beautiful car, but if I can't tell you how much it's going to cost, how could you possibly make a decision? So I think when, when we countered that, the, the team was, was actually asked to do some high level estimating, and I, I will say high level, because they didn't really get into the nitty gritty about where do we actually put this elevator? So they actually had the elevator placed outside of the student resource center in a, a section of the building where it could have never gone because of all of the mechanicals that were in that portion of the building. So, so based upon the, the level of analysis, which was high level at best, they came up with some rough estimates of costs. The reality is much more detailed, as we get into the detail, we're discovering many more things. To your point, exactly, the, the consideration of, of how if you were putting an elevator in a blank space, it would cost X dollars, but if you're putting it in the middle of a building, it's going to cost X plus Y dollars, okay? So Josh, Surnia, can you, can you talk about the, the master planning process and maybe help out a little bit here?
I will, I will certainly try. I, I think that the, I believe the point was made already, but it, it's, it's worth revisiting to clarify that the FGM and Pepper team was not the team that did the master plan, nor did we come up with the, the budget based on all of the things that the master plan looked at. And, and Mike, you'd, you had said master design. I, I would, I would not characterize the master plan in terms of design, even conceptual design. The master plan really looked at the building as a whole and looked at it diagrammatically. And it was certainly putting, that, that team, Perkins and Will and ICI, which was the construction manager that did that budget, they, what they were tasked with, from, from what we've seen, they, they appeared to, it appears that they, 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 they took care of what they were charged with, and, and, and that was purely a, a master plan. The, the difficulty with moving forward with project one, which was a, a budget born out of the master plan, is that as you, as we've talked about, once we come in and then actually start conceptualizing and doing designs and detailing and uncovering and exploring in the building and, and exploring by, by multiple trades, it's, it's geotechnical engineers, et cetera. Through all of that, unfortunately, there are a lot of the unknowns that, that would never have been discovered during a master plan process. They come, they kind of come to the surface. And, and so we are left with dealing with the, the realities of that. And, and so while the master plan budget did have contingency built into it, it was not nearly enough to, to address all of these, these things that have been uncovered.
Can I just ask, I, you know, this is now, how long has, have we been, has this been taken over from the, the visioning team? How long has the current team been working on this?
Or for a year, for one year?
So for a year, we're a year into this, and it is, you know, I'm feeling a little bit the way that once you're, once it's yours and I, whatever it is, when you're in a new position and it's, it's only new a little bit, and then somebody's got to own it. So it's, it's very unsettling hearing that, you know, the, the folks that did this first part, that's why we're in this position. If that's true, why are we just knowing all of this now as we have been, you know, moving forward with, and this is directed at, I think more our administration? The, the, the pace of forward movement in terms of expectations of we're ready to do this and ready to break ground? And I, I don't even know how long this has been, you know, being played around with, and by played around, I mean worked with, to understand this current, you know, these current numbers. Because the board receiving this now, after voting to proceed with, you know, groundbreaking, when this information was not a part of the discussion, the, the hesitation from the administration was put forward as given the COVID-19. This seems like a lot more than that, and I'm, I'm really struggling to understand what all the pieces are and how we determine what we're doing. Because I am, I am more confused now in terms of, of where things are than I was before.
So I'm, I'm going to-
And that's just my-
Okay, I understand. So I'm going to speak a little bit what I know, and then Mike, if you want to chime in. We've, we have had the conversation before about where we thought we would be at some point, back in the fall, I believe it was. Mike did a presentation in a board meeting where he talked about, he has several colleagues members of the month, but it talked about what was bid, what was allocated for different items, and then it had, where we saw we were headed, and it had a variance report similar to what he showed today. He did that in the fall. We came, we had a discussion, if you remember, about the door spacing back in the fall and, and how the door spacing was not put into the context of the work that had to be done. And so as we've uncovered things, the utilization study, there's lots of things, if they have been uncovered, we've tried to bring those items to the board. As I indicated earlier, we've talked about the servary before. We've, we've tried to hit all these things. In fact, with the presentation last week, if you recall, I mean, the presentation about that, Mike actually made a comment that he wished he had had this presentation before that presentation so that the board could see the context. so that the board could see the context. So I, I don't want it to come across like we're just now pulling this out because along the way, we've had the discussions about cost and what it could possibly be. And in one board meeting, I remember the board saying, well, if it's going to cost more, tell us what it's going to be. And so they've been working to try to get those prices and those costs. And so it was never our intent to make the board feel as though we were just pulling this out now that they've made a decision. They have been working on this and it has been a year. And over the course of the year, we've come up with, with several things. We, it's been quite a few board meetings ago where we even talked about the fact that we would have, possibly had to reduce classrooms. And so, you know, we've had these conversations where at this point where we, we need to finally make a decision. So maybe that's why it feels like it's just coming from nowhere because we now have to make a decision on the survey, on the elevator and on the classroom.
The other thing I would add, Joy Lynn, is the, the, the other factor that has been confounding this or confusing it is when everything was bundled, we had the capital improvement dollars sitting in there also. So what we were trying to do was to, you know, to some degree, we were trying to, you know, steal from Peter to pay Paul. So, and, and that, that it helps with Project One, but it hurts with the capital improvements. So at the end of the day, you try to make it work, we tried to make it work, but it got to the point where we were looking at making so many cuts and they were so significant to the, to the vision of what Project One was meant to be, that we felt we had to, we had to come back to the board. Now, could we have done it sooner? Yeah, well, we kind of have said bits and pieces of it. This is really the first time it all has come together in one piece with a magnitude.
I have a question again, Sarah, does, can I go? I just wanted to know just quickly, when will we know? Like, so Mike, you mentioned something about having, you mentioned about having like the opportunity to look at the whole plan and then make a decision, like when will we know what it's actually going to be? Because I feel, I'm feeling a bit like we did have, Mr. Cerniac did come before and present a budget to us that had, had the information include, which included some contingencies. And so I'm just, I'm wanting to know, when will we actually know what we're looking at? Because it seems to be fluctuating a lot.
I'll be honest with you, I don't know how to answer that because I don't know what the priority is. If the priority is there are certain non-negotiables on this list that have to be done. Now Gina, you've given us a couple of those, I've made a note of those. So if there's other things that we would say are non-negotiables, then we will, we would actually take those things and make sure those are included. And then we would look at other things to try to get to, to stay within our means. So, so if the board says to me this evening, Mike, you got to stay within the 32.6, period, okay? However, within that 32.6, you have to do X, Y and Z. We will go back and we will determine, can we do X, Y and Z within the 32.6 million? If the answer is yes, well, the answer will probably be, okay, we could, what, the answer could possibly be, no, we can't do it. But if the answer is yes, we could say, yes, but that means these other things have to come off the list, right? So that's one way of looking at it. But if, if the board's going to say something different, like, you know, these are non-negotiables, come back and let us know how much money it's going to be and we'll consider that. So I guess we can, we can, we can do any kind of scenario, but I guess I need to understand what the will of the board is with respect to staying with the original budget. These are versus trying to look at what was in the original scope and trying to, to, to play around with that original scope in some way to say of the, of the seven or eight or nine or 10 things on there, these four or five are absolute requirements. Okay, so I'm, we're, we're kind of, the assumption that's sort of implicit in this is that the South CAF S R C is going to happen, right? So we're just assuming we're going to do that. If that's not the right assumption, we can say, we won't do that, right? I mean, we, we have a demo package out there and we're actually, we'd have to put some things back together. But, you know, anything could be on the table at this point. But I think the board has got to help with respect to providing some guidance on which, which way you want us to, to, to go here.
Eric, can I ask a few questions?
Yes, although it's very hard to hear you, Craig.
Is that better or?
Yes.
Okay, so Mike, can you go back to page five?
Yeah, I know, whoever's controlling it, please go back to page five, the presentation.
That's four, one more.
Other way.
Other way. So I think you hit it, but I mean, I'll, I'll, just for my clarification, the fundamental problem is, is that the S R C itself is taking up 22 mil, 22 and a half million of $32 million.
Yes.
And $5 million of money that frankly is probably needed to invest in sped, invest in classrooms, invest in all gender toilets, et cetera, has been consumed because that's $5 million over budget.
Yes.
So is it a, are we at a point where the S R C, South CAF design is, is all set, ready to tear down? And we've committed to 22 million, 22 and a half million dollars?
For all intents and purposes, yes. I mean, we haven't knocked the building down, but we've done a lot of the enabling work, which is a bunch of disconnection to, in preparation for a June 1st breaking ground.
Okay, I mean, so that puts us in, if, if I take that as a fact, then I have $10 million and I have $20 million with the projects, right?
Yep.
And part of the issue that is, and I don't, you know, I, this has been coming all along. I'm not going to kind of go where other people have, you've kind of seen this happen in slow motion. But I, I guess I missed that we approved the 22 and a half million dollars to build a 17 and a half million dollar estimate. But maybe because it was bundled, maybe because it was unbundled, but that's the fundamental issue.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And I don't know how to unwind it other than stop it. Is that my only option? Is there, is there any option to change the design of the S R C to get some of that 5 million back?
I, I will, I'll ask for help on that one. My, my gut is you could probably get some of it back. I'm not sure how much of it you're actually going to get back.
Yeah, Josh with Pepper, it also has to do with, you know, we, we wanted to break ground in June.
Explain, Josh.
Okay.
So you wanted to break ground in June, so now it's hard to go back, you're right.
Right.
This is Lance with Pepper. I just wanted to, and Mike brought this up earlier, but I just wanted to make mention, if you look at row 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, it shows that what's, what's left to be bid out of that 22.5, let's say, is 13.693. And right now we're out on the street with the MEPs, Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing, Fire Protection. And what's left to bid would be the finishes. And when's that going out to bid? I can't remember the exact date.
The 9th.
The 9th of June?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I don't want to speak for Josh Cerniac, but I mean, the finishes are probably the only place that you could scale back to save some money on the S R C at this point prior to bid. Not to say that after the bids, you couldn't go back and try to save, save some money with the bidders that are your low bidders. I mean, that's an option as well. But just basically what, what's not already either committed or on the street. And I don't know exactly how much of that 13.7 million is MEPs, but.
But $20 million, it, it, the bottom line is that, let's say there's something we could get out of finishes or whatever. Fundamentally, the design that we decided for the S R C costs us at least $20 million. And we can't change that unless we want to change the S R C and stop the project, right? I mean practically.
Yes.
Right? So that means either our choice is either to do that or to decide of these other projects, what we can do and what we can't do. And that means about half of them have to go if we're going to hit $32 million. That seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yep. So, so I, I mean, that's puts us in a very difficult situation because the only way we do that is to cut into north elevator, all gender toilets, sped, et cetera, in ways that none of us want to.
There is another way, which I, I, I have to just put it out on the table, is the other lever we have to pull here is the capital improvement dollars. Now, it's another bucket of money that is bundled in here. So let's just say we don't do the entire roof as we plan to do it. We push off the roof, a portion of the roof, that's the, the, the portion that's the least damaged. And we can maybe get back, you know, a million to 2 million there. And I'm, I'm making up numbers here, so don't, don't hold me to this, but.
So taking from the capital improvement bucket to make the other bucket a little bigger.
Yes, yes, to try, to try to, to save some of these other items. Because, because at the end of the day, you got to rebundle, right? Because you, you can't really, I, I did this just from, from the point of view of illustrating it. But at the end of the day, they, it really is all the same work, right? You can't really distinguish them. But, but you know, we need to be held accountable to what the budget was. The reality is we don't have enough money. We could get some of that back from capital improvement. But that means now we're pushing capital improvements out further. And when we talked to the board earlier, several months ago, we all agreed that wasn't a great thing to do, but you, you do what you have to do, right? So, but that is another way you could do this.
And, and, and you know what? I, I wanted to also say too, that was part of where that, the debt was presented at the committee, the whole meeting. We were showing that, that it was the bundling that had been done. You've seen the Project One, then you've seen 4 million, and then you've seen the 10-year maintenance. That's why that was all considered basically in Project One. It's called Project One because it's a whole bundle, but we break it up, you know, it was broken out on that, those slides.
Yeah, Cindy, I, I appreciate that. I, I don't want to go there because whether we spend fund balance additional 5 to 10 million dollars or we spend debt is immaterial. I mean, it, that's not, that's a whole different decision from how do we decide what scope we do now and what scope we don't. You know, so I, I have a couple of other comments, but I'll let anybody else talk before I say them.
Tom, can I jump in? I have, I have two, a couple of comments just to start. A question while we have this slide on the table. Can you tell me right now how much contingency is in what we're seeing there?
Go ahead.
That's, I think, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I got to believe that in the.
Basically 15%.
Well, no, but the work that's already bid, the first floor line items would have 5%. That 13.693 would have 15% and all the line items down below would have 15%. So it's, you know what I mean? Basically what's bid only has a construction contingency and, and what's not bid, that 13.693 doesn't still have 10% design, 5% construction, it probably has 5 and 5. Does that answer your question, Tom?
So, so wait, so you're saying the first four lines have about, have 5% contingency remaining?
Yeah, built into them.
Everything above, that everything below that has 50, it still has 15%.
Yeah, I don't think the 13.693 has because that design had developed and we dropped that design contingency down, I think from 10% down to 5%, is that right, Cerniac? I, I, I don't have that estimate. I don't have it in front of me, so we, we, I, I want to be careful here. I, I don't want to say something that, that we have to correct later, so. But ballpark, that's basically what we're talking about. And then in the other work that's still in, that really is just, you know, is still, is going into the design right now, all those remaining projects, we probably have 15% design contingency in them.
Do you know what I'm talking about, where will the money come from? Fund balance or cutting scope?
Cindy, was that a question or a comment?
No, I wasn't commenting at all, I was looking at, I was just trying to think about, you know, what we could do when we're looking at this and how it could come from either fund balance or, you know, cutting some scope is all, I'm, I'm just mumbling to myself, sorry.
Okay, no worries.
Mike, so, so, okay, so I, I was just trying to get a handle of the magnitude. Are we seeing the, you know, I mean, is there contingency out there that could be absorbed in any way, shape? What's the magnitude of it? Because I mean, when we went from, if you think about it, when we went from 12 to 15%, that's adding a million dollars right off the top, right? And that comes out of classrooms or something in, in the total dollar. So we're kind of weighing that, that's, that's a million bucks just for that extra 3%. Okay, let me go to a second point that I want to make, which goes to your question, at least from my perspective. When you're talking about capital improvement, so, or cap, the capital versus the phase one. I'm looking to the administration and I'm looking to the people in the building to be able to give me a clear assessment of what we can and can't do in terms of maintaining our building. For, for you to ask the board, should we steal from here or do that, I don't think is right. I mean, the board, that's not a board, or I'm not qualified to make that answer, okay? Or I shouldn't be making that answer. That answer should be based on what, what your assessment, I'm not walking in that building and looking at a roof or looking at a boiler, et cetera. So I don't, I don't want to have that discussion. You need to say, here's what the, what we need to do to maintain the building and present it. And I don't think that's realistic to sit there and say, now you're presenting as an option, that's fine. But I don't think that that's a decision that I want to make of, should we do this capital repair or this capital repair?
Well, Tom, Tom, I only brought that up because that was another option. That the reason I specifically left that out of this conversation was because of exactly that. And that's why I said next month, we're going to come back with what, with exactly what you said, is what we feel is necessary to do to maintain the building.
Okay, good, then I think that, and then going back to the issue of, you know, the, the ultimate decision of, of what's on the table. Again, I think, and, and we can rewind the clock. I think when the plans were put together, there was dialogue on what the priorities were that what, that in my mind took and shaped what Project One became. When, when, when the Imagine work was done and there was, you know, the board was asked, what do you want done? And the focus at that time was, okay, we want to make sure we're taking care of the, the sped facilities, facilities and, and the, the classrooms as the top priority. And I think that was pretty good direction. Maybe it's not good enough, but I, I think that was given and I, I support Gina's introductory comments, which is now asking us to say, okay, wait a second, do we want to now undo that? That's what was, that's what the direction was given when we, when we initiated Phase One. Now that it were, you know, my, my concern is, okay, after the, the last update, you know, as you look at these slides, it's the September one, we were 14% off. Now we're 26% off, so does the, you know, this, what's the next data point in that? Now we're 26% off, so does the, you know, what's the next data point in that slide? Is it the next one 40% off, or that's where I'm struggling, okay?
Well, Tom, let's go back, rewinding the clock a little bit, because one of the reasons we are sitting here is because we were giving, given the direction by the board very clearly to break ground by June, specifically on the SRC on the South Cap. Okay, that was clear, that was very clear. That was not our recommendation, but that was what was given to us. By virtue of doing that, we're now in a place where the bulk of the spend happens early in the project. And one of the cons that we listed is by virtue of doing it this way, even though that was, there were many reasons beyond the team, that it was appropriate to do it that way. The danger is what we're running into right now, is you're spending the bulk of your money, and you're really limiting your, by virtue of making that decision, that we had to break ground on the South Cap and SRC, we by default prioritize that above everything else. Okay, I mean, that is really what, that was direction from the board. So I want to be clear about that. I mean, I hear everything you're saying, and you're totally right. All these other things were prioritized. They wouldn't have been in this first phase if they weren't. But by virtue of sort of where we have landed, in the different direction we've gotten along the way, this is where we are.
Tom, this is Lance with Pepper. I wanted to just mention one thing in reference to your comment. We just did a budget update on those remaining projects, basically everything outside of the SRC and South Cafe. So we did a budget back, that was one of those slides, where it was back in September 17th of 2019, and we came up with the numbers for those projects, which is exactly what you're seeing on this screen right here. So we just did a budget update, and we came very close to what these numbers are. For the projects, you know, for the big projects, Commons Main Entrance, Library and Phil Sped, Classrooms, all those major projects, we just priced, and our numbers came back basically, you know, almost spot on. So we feel, we feel pretty good. So I definitely understand, because I don't want you, I can understand you don't want to see a trend where the next time we come back and, you know, we've got more problems. Did that answer your question?
Oops, I had to unmute. Yeah, I mean, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that you've already done a kind of a relook at the remaining part of Project One, and you're, if I'm hearing, you're not anticipating the 26% over, we're 30% over on the SRC. If I'm reading that right. And you're not anticipating a lot of movement in the rest, is what I think I heard.
Correct.
Okay.
Ralph, so Matt?
Quick question, so just for my clarification, when did the board know we were running a 30% overage on the SRC?
Well, if you want to look, I'm not even sure I would qualify it as 30%. These numbers were more directional. I can't defend these numbers to the penny. If you wanted an analysis of exactly how far over you are on the SRC, we'd have to go back and pull some other things out. I did the best I could, Ralph, to get to this point. The dilemma is, everything's bundled in terms of the way it was bid out. So I tried to do this in a way just to make...
I understand, Mike. I think what I'm saying is, I don't, I am sure that I never understood that we were over at 30%, running 30% over on the SRC portion of the project, that I never had that number in my head.
Yeah.
Until today.
And I'm not sure that...
And so what I'm saying is, you got direction from the board to proceed with the project, predicated on our understanding that the overages were within the variances you had quoted to us, and that they weren't exceeding that. And so that's why you got that direction, right? It was a rational direction. We knew what the variances were. This, I really think, is the first time we're getting the information where the variance was this significant on this portion of the project. And it seems to me, and I'm not, this isn't, this is just from a timing in how a board does its job and whatever kind of thing, but it seems to me like when you made, or when the administration at least made its presentation to us on the debt certificates, that this information was known at that time, and maybe was even part of the reason why the administration was suggesting we didn't go forward with the project or needed the debt certificates, but it was never communicated to the board that the overage was that significant, which was part of the rationale driving the administration's recommendation either to do the debt certificate or to put off doing the construction. So that's where the communication piece became a little iffy. And now where we're going forward is, you know, we're at the point where we are going to do this project. It is crucial that it be done. The building hasn't been renovated in any way in over 50 years. We've all said that. It needs the capital work. So we just have to, number one, going forward, really have faith in the numbers that are coming in. It's coming in timely. And that, number two, when you make a, when, this isn't you personally, this is you, administration. When the administration makes any kind of recommendation to us on how to finance this, that we understand and are privy to all the information going into that recommendation, because that would inform how we do what we do, right?
So I feel compelled to say something again. When we came, when we came forward with the debt certificate conversation, that was at the request of the board. When you say we made the decision to not go forward because we already knew, Mike and his team were still crunching those numbers. And as I said, when we had the conversation about the debt certificates, it was, he even said, I wish he had the numbers now to make that presentation. When we started the conversation about not funding in response to COVID, it was built upon what we were hearing from the Illinois State Board of Education, what we were hearing from West 40, with the potential, and what we were hearing from the village about the potential impact on all school districts, not just us, finances as a result of COVID. That was what initiated our conversation about not going forward with Project One.
If I could, Josh Cerniac with FGM, if I could clear something, actually a couple of items up. The overage on the South Cafeteria and SRC is not 30%. It is, it is 21%. And in September of 2019, which was not even the last time that the estimate and budget shortfall was presented, but it was the first conceptual estimate that was presented, the SRC and South Cafeteria were 19% over in September of 2019. So between September of 2019 and now, that's only a difference of 2%. What you have to take out, and what you're seeing on the screen right now, is the basement. The basement was never part of the original project for the South Cafeteria and SRC. Hence, hence why it's broken out separately. Mike went through this during the presentation, that that 3.6 million is held out because of it being funded by, excuse me, the capital improvement budget.
You said you had a couple things, Josh, was that, was that it?
I, thank you, yes. So going...
That didn't sound like a couple to me.
Thank you. Tom, you had asked specifically about contingency. So while we were discussing this, I went and opened the most current estimate from Pepper. And for the, for the items that have already been bid, there's just a 5% construction contingency. For the BP4 item, for the South Cafeteria and SRC, there's a 5% construction contingency, and the design contingency was reduced to 5%, so a total of 10% contingency. And then for all of the remaining items, Lance, I believe correctly, did state, and in fact, I just confirmed that for all the remaining items, they still carry a 15% contingency.
Thank you. Matt, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Thanks.
Can I just ask a question before, just on his math? I'm sorry, Matt, just about the math, because I'm confused.
No, go ahead, Ralph, it's okay.
5.3 divided by 17.2 is 30%.
But that's, that 5.3 factors in the 3.6 million for the basement. So if, Chris, could you go to...
Does it, so the basement was pulled up, but the basement is included somewhere in those top lines, right? A lines above it, isn't it?
Yeah, it's included in the total. It's included in the 17.254. And then it's pulled out at the bottom. So the real budget is actually several pages back, which we did do, we did verify that when we were talking about this earlier. Chris, could you go back two pages, please?
Yeah, Mike, so I'm still a little confused. When I add together 890 plus 122 plus 409 plus 7.4 plus 13.6, I get 22.5.
Right.
Is the basement included in one of those lines?
It's included, yeah, it's in a number of those lines. As I said, Ralph, that's why it's difficult, because the basement was bid in there, so in order for the number to come out correctly, I had to artificially stick it in in the original budget column and then pull it out. So if you go, if you look at this page that's being displayed right now...
But because the basement is part of this project that you have to do to do the SRC, then the overage is 30%. If it's buried in this, because it's 5 million more than the initial estimate. It's a 30% increase to do the basement project as part of this.
The point that I was making though, is if, on the slide that is up now, the conceptual estimate that was presented in September...
So that 30% overage, that 30% overage was never communicated clearly to the board? Till today.
So I know everyone is frustrated, that is clear. But I also feel as though we still have a decision point that we need to arrive at at some point this evening. So I would like some direction from the board as to what we're going to do about this, because how we got here, while important and relevant and necessary for, worthy of discussion, is not where we need to end up. So Matt, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah, for that. That's a good segue, because that's, I'm not going to belabor any more than has already been said. I appreciate and I understand where my fellow board members are on this. I will say that from the get-go, through the whole Imagine process, there were always remarks made about kind of this unknown when you dig things up. And so here we are. And while I also share the frustration of feeling like, wait, we didn't know this nine days ago? And it seems like, really, did I miss a memo or two? The point is, we are here. The point is, a key point for me is fundamentally, do we want to do this project still if it's 38 or 39 million dollars potentially versus 32, 33? And just speaking, pulling back, zooming back out, looking at the totality of this entire endeavor, going back to 2017, when Imagine was formed and devoted a ton of time and had no budget. There was no budgets, no constraints really, because we wanted to really dream big. The, at that point, this was, this is the first project. It's the least expensive of all of these projects, if I'm recalling correctly. The second one, which may or may not happen, and it's, you know, vision right now, is pushing 65, 70 million dollars, right? And part of, I think, the psychology, the emotion that I know I feel, and I think others may feel as well, and what may form this discussion is, oh my goodness, if this is the shoe that's dropping on this one, what's going to be for the rest of this? Does this bode for, like, this being astronomical? And our world has changed significantly in the last several months. And we know that even moving forward, as we have in the last week, with the pronouncement, June 1st, let's go forward, let's get going, you know, and overriding the administration's recommendation at that point, we've already gone on a ledge. And here, it's like, where it being has to like go out even further if we are to approve something that's approaching the full scope and not scaling back based on the budgetary concern. So, so I guess I, to say all that is preamble to, I personally feel like there's some elements to this that could be scaled back, of course, and I support looking into some of those things, like the finishes, you know, some of the things that are less fundamental. But, you know, in the grand scheme of all of what we're doing and the moment we're in, I'm supportive of looking at pursuing much of this, like a big chunk, and not tearing back in a big way, either of those two big package options that were seen. So that's where I am at, and that's opens to other people's input. And so I will just pause at that point.
I feel like we're gonna have, we sort of need to go back around to get everyone's standpoint on how we move forward. But I'll just start with, you know, I'm, I am frankly not that surprised that we're having these overruns, simply because this building has been so underinvested for, you know, at least 50 years that we know of, probably going back further, right? So I'm not sure that it's, perhaps, I mean, whether we have the information or not, I don't think it should be surprising that we're finding out that there's much bigger problems than we anticipated in terms of the actual structural issues going on with the school. But I will say this, I also am not, I guess I'm not okay with like not doing the elevator and not doing, sorry, I have like a frog in my throat, not doing the elevator and not doing the all-gender bathrooms and cutting back on classrooms, because to me, that's like the real core of what we are trying to do here, right? That was the whole impetus really behind Project One. So it feels very, very disheartening that that's sort of where we're at at this point, and I'm not placing blame on anyone for how we got here. I mean, I guess I could, you know, place blame on years of neglect. But, you know, I just, I don't know how we move forward, because I think what I probably don't want is a $22 million SRC, to be quite honest. I mean, to me, that is the part that is not unimportant, but certainly to me, less important than trying to address some of these spaces that affect, like, clearly are most vulnerable students. So, I mean, that's where I am. I don't have an answer, but that's my reaction at this point. So, guys, what do we do? It's 11:30, and I don't think we've given our administration any direction at this point, and I have not helped either, so where...
All right. I mean, here's my two cents on it. I'm kind of between a place that says, what is my, from one standpoint, I don't think that we can back away, and I don't want to back away, from all gender toilets and the right kind of ADA improvements. Sped, it's hard to judge in terms of the holistic nature of it. There might be some opportunity there, and I think there's opportunity to cut. So to get some of that, am I willing to expand the budget of the project? I guess I'm in that place, but only, only to a certain extent. So to me, if the project, because of fundamentally the SRC cost, if... So we can't, from my standpoint, can't compromise on the north elevator, can't compromise on the all-gender toilets, can compromise a little bit on sped, can compromise on finishes, you know, can compromise a little bit on classrooms, but not much more than you've already done at cutting back. If that number is still $5 million... If that number is still $5 million or more over budget, or $4 or $5 million over budget, then I would stop the entire thing. And I would say we need to go back to the drawing board.
Could you go through your can and can'ts? I wasn't hearing them.
I can't compromise on all-gender toilets.
Okay.
Can't compromise on an ADA elevator.
Okay.
I can compromise a little bit on classrooms. You've already cut some back.
Yeah.
I have a hard time being able to judge on sped. There might be some opportunity to cut back there. You guys have to tell me.
Yep.
I would cut back on finishes and try to reduce the cost of the SRC at all lengths. That would include the servy.
Okay.
And that is still going to end up with a number that's bigger than 32.6. And, you know, then it becomes judgment. But if it's, you know, if it's 3 million over, 10% over, maybe 12% over, I can live with that. It starts to get to be, you know, 20 or 30% over, I can't live with it, and I need to stop it and rethink.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Icy, I just want to ask a quick question. You said you can or you cannot with the servy. I just wanted to be clear.
I can't justify the servy.
You cannot justify.
Cannot justify the servy. I can't justify anything that's in the SRC that I don't absolutely need, that costs me all-gender toilets, ADA access, and most of, and, you know, any more than some percentage of, small percentage of my classrooms.
I just wanted to make sure. I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, sorry, that's fine. I mean, that's where I come down.
Thank you.
I'm in a very similar position. I hate to make it that simple, but I, you know, I would agree that, I agree with the can't compromise ones, because those are what we said when we first put Project 1 forward. And so those are the ones that need to get done. I would agree that, you know, it's the SRC, and that it's kind of the lead weight, and we've got to look at what's there and what really needs to be done. When even the discussion on finishes, to me, having that discussion tells me we're off-base. I mean, if we're thinking we need top-of-the-line finishes and we're $8 million over, I'm not, that's not where my head would be at, so.
No, top-of-the-line finishes disappeared a while ago.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
I'll weigh in. I am a, I agree with what has been said about the clear communication from the board about Phase 1 being about student needs and the academic interests of our students. And so the classrooms, the ADA accessibility, including the elevator, as well as the the sped facilities. I, you know, we've talked about this from the standpoint of, you know, the SRC and, you know, the comment being made during a heated discussion of the board said to, you know, break ground, June 1, and that was about the SRC. Well, that SRC is coming first from what I've learned about this process, the domino effect. That's what had to be done to make room for the other thing. So I just wanted to be on the record that it, you know, we're not proceeding in this manner because the board wanted to make sure we had a glossy new cafeteria and student center before we had classrooms. This was, this is how this had to necessarily be played out. I'm concerned with reducing classrooms too much because we're entering a new era where we're talking about the need for less students per classroom. And so is that really the wisest decision? I don't know that I'm qualified to make that decision, but I would be interested to know what we mean by reducing classrooms and how many, and what that means in terms of class, you know, ratios and things like that, given that there may be a new need. So I agree that if it gets to be 20 or 30% over, whatever, that that means that we are so far off track that this isn't, we're talking about Project 1.5, and that's disconcerting. And I would just, for people's reference, you know, the memo last month, I won't read, but the recommendation that came, if rereading that, there is no information in there about the concerns about Project 1 being delayed, having anything to do with cost overruns or the information we're talking about tonight. So I want to make sure that that does not become a part of the communication. Because, yes, the recommendation from the board, the vote from the board was different from the administrative recommendation. But the recommendation from the administration did not include this information. And I need that to be on the record. That is correct.
Dr. Moore, your comment about reducing classrooms, it's an unfortunate turn of the phrase, I apologize. It's really just reducing the number of classrooms that would be renovated. We're actually not going to be reducing the number of classrooms.
Then I would suggest we clear that up in this presentation, because that is how it reads now. And I'm sure folks have already started crafting emails to the board and the superintendent. So as many things as we can make clear from a communication standpoint, the better, in my opinion. But thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, Gina, do you want to go? Do you want?
No, you go ahead, Ralph.
All right. So I am with my fellow board members and with the children who attend our school in that the all-gender toilet rooms, the ADA accessibility for the elevators, and retrofitting the classrooms to make them ADA compliant are crucial upgrades this building sorely needs and that I would, I personally would not be willing to compromise. And I think that that's because the compromise would fall on students who have had too much compromised for them already. I also agree that there might be something you could find in sped and finishes, all those other stuff. I think, by one nuanced difference, we're so far down this road, and the building so needs the ADA elevators, the all-gender toilets, these other upgrades, that even if, after pairing, cost overruns are maybe a little higher than what Craig could tolerate, I'm kind of with Matt. I would take, I would take reserve that we've built up. I'd cover those cost overruns. I'd complete these elements of the project and then have some very, very serious discussions about what happens with Project 2 and how much of that we could actually afford and do, and what maybe could be cut out of that. But our building is old, and our facilities are really not amenable to many students for a number of reasons involving accessibility and gender equity. And I think we have an opportunity to address them, and so we should. It's unfortunate, we have this significant cost overrun that's sitting one element of the project that is less important to the students, but crucial to the ordering of the construction. But it is what it is, as Matt said, so we are there. And so that's where I would come out. I would look for savings to be wrangled from all those other areas. I would like to see the cost overrun come down as much as it can. And then I would, in all likelihood, be in favor of continuing with the project out of reserves and then discussing what we cut from Project 2 to make up for it.
Thank you.
Gina, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, so at the outset, I said that the all-gender restrooms, the sped enhancements that are needed, the classroom pieces, none of that is negotiable to me. Anything that students are directly impacted by in a way that impacts their ability to have access to what they need to be who they are, I can't, I can't go with that. The SRC piece in this conversation that we're having around, you know, there are pieces of what the SRC is intended to be that have a big equity component to them, allowing for space for people, for our students, to have additional time in the building that need it and ways that that, so those pieces of what the SRC stood for, for me, are still critically valuable to me. The way that the formatting of the movement and the flow in that space, which would allow them to be in the building longer for students who need that space and have more time to work with their educators, that's important. So I'm not saying the SRC as the plan is, you know, I'm not like, yeah, let's go spend a ton more money to make that happen. What I'm saying is, there are aspects of it that were critical to some of the equity issues that we've been talking about. And I think that needs to be looked at as well.
Thank you.
So I guess, Mike, I have a question for you or for the rest of the construction and planning team. So June 1 has been a state that we sort of have had, you know, in our heads as our start date. Are you, is that something that's still possible, given the fact that we're sort of retooling some of this, right? Like, how does this start on Monday? Have we given you the direction you need? What needs to happen between now and then to sort of figure this out?
It's already started. The reality of it is, the enabling work, I mean, breaking ground is a, it's a symbolic thing, right? As soon as we got the go-ahead, when we, it was determined school wasn't going to be held for the rest of this year, we did everything we could to shift construction into high gear. And the work has already started. The enabling work for the demolition has already begun. So if you want to call that breaking ground, we've already broken ground, right? I mean,
Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, maybe that's an in-ourful phrase, but June 1 seems to be a date that we're really shooting for.
Yeah, but the reality is that, that whole, everything we characterize as the June 1 date has already begun. Because we could, because there's no students or staff, or faculty or staff in the building. So that's, that's already happened. So we're not holding anything up. The thing that, the thing that we are actually holding up, and I heard from at least a couple of folks, is the servy, and that we really need, because that is the situation of a demolition, right? We can't demolish it if we're not going to rebuild it. And so that's part, that was part and parcel of the whole demo package. It was an alternate to that. So we either accept that alternate and demolish it, which means then we have to spend the money to rebuild it, or we figure out a way around demolishing it. We, we've got to figure out a way to deal with the soil underneath it. So I don't know, I don't, I don't want to begin to talk about that.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking about, right? What, what do you need to do now? Like, what is the next step for everyone now that you've gotten this direction from the board? Like, how is this going to move forward at this point?
Well, I'm going to try to, I got different direction from different board members. So I'm going to try to distill that into something of a consensus, you know, to whatever extent we can. It's been helpful, because, you know, you've reinforced certain things. So I'll try to do that. We'll go back with the team, and we'll try to sort out what possibilities we were. I think going back to what Craig said, is coming back with better numbers. And going back to what Tom said, looking at the capital improvement portion of that, which I said at the onset, we were going to do anyway, and bringing the whole package together. So, yes?
I would really like, because like you, I've heard multiple things from the board. If Sarah, you could summarize what you heard, so that we're all on the same page.
This is what I heard, and I think that there were a couple outliers. So I might get some pushback for this, but what I heard was, no compromising on the elevators, no compromising on the all-gender bathrooms, no compromising on, to the extent, I mean, no compromising on classrooms, no compromising on sped. I mean, that's, that's sort of the gist of what I heard. I know that Craig, for example, thought that we may be able to sort of nip and tuck a little bit. And so I'll leave that to the administration to figure out if that's possible. But those are the things that I heard. Gina, I know definitely wants to make sure that we have a common spaces on the SRC specifically. So it seems to me that the place where the consensus is around trying to trim as much as we can is the SRC, right? If we can emerge from this process with an SRC that meets the needs of students, as Gina had pointed out, it doesn't matter so much that it, what the finishes look like, or, you know, any of that sort of stuff. The difficulty I see with that, though, is I don't know structurally if that's even possible, if what you're saying is that the, you know, the basement and all the stuff underneath it is really what's the issue, right? So I don't really know how you break that tone anymore. So I don't know. That's my summary, and I'd love it if somebody else would chime in if I got something wrong.
Sarah, can I ask just one question? I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly, too. Basically, the board is saying to use this from a fund balance, correct? What we have in fund balance, because I know we say that we have, you know, money in reserve of 20 million, but the one thing we have to look at, that's fund balance. You know, no matter what, at the end of the day, that becomes our fund balance. So I just want to make sure that's what I'm hearing, because I need to graph everything differently once I get solid numbers from Mike, to see where we are sitting for our budgets and everything, too, now. So that's, I just want to make sure that's what my understanding.
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
I, the issue with the, I think, the
Jackie, you're breaking up.
I don't, we came to this. Oh. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Jackie, I'm sorry. It's really, yeah, now it seems okay.
Maybe, yes.
Now you're frozen.
Making it just okay.
All right, so Jackie.
I'll write it down.
We couldn't hear Jackie there, and I think if, I'll just, if I can just, maybe in another half-minute, we can hear you better. I don't know if I, if, when I can't hear someone, if that's a universal situation. So that's the challenge, but I think it seems like it's universal. Hopefully, you can hear me. Ultimately, you know, the number in my head is 37 and 1/2, okay? So I want to just say that, that's my number. Instead of 32.6, I'll say 37.5, and whatever that may encompass based on the direction of the board. And I don't know if that's helpful. I hope it's helpful. It's certainly, you know, a practical data point. So I will just pause, and hopefully Jackie, her transmission is better.
Is it better?
Yes.
Okay. I was talking about what seems to be urgent in decision with demolition has to do with the servy. And as a board, I don't know that we reached any consensus on moving forward with that or not. And my opinion is that, given what was talked about with the soil and all of that, trying to retrofit at this point seems, if I'm understanding it correctly, if it's a difference between doing it all right now or leaving that and then having to do major repairs later, I would be in favor of having the servy be a part of it because of the, what was said about the issues that were found underneath. And the other thing we did not, that I would, we don't have full information on yet, is the Husky pups program and that whole information. That's a part of the design and the budget, but I'm not sure that we have the fine information about terminations on the movement.
I can't hear you, but I think we're talking about the Husky. I can't, I can't hear you, but I think we're talking about the Husky pups. I thought we decided not to make those major renovations due to the fire piece. But that is a part of, I'm not sure if it, I think it's phase two, though, where we were talking about moving rooms. Or was that phase one, Mike?
Well, there's a, there's a small move that has to happen to accommodate the sped remodeling. That's the infant room. But that's not significant. We, we still have to work out the timing of that, but that I think is in next summer's plan. But the, but the rest of it doesn't come till like phase four. So in, in, it's not in any of these numbers.
So I, Jackie believes that it is in the budget for phase one?
Well, the, the infant room being moved just to get the sped work done is, but that's the only part of it. Which is, it's not, nothing, nothing near what we were talking about before with re, redoing that space. That is, that part is not in any of these numbers.
So does that do it, or do you need more?
Well, I appreciate Jackie saying that. I'd love to hear other people's thoughts on the servary. I heard, I think I heard Craig say no. Tom said he agreed with Craig. I'm not sure if that's a no. Maybe if we could get it. The, the issue with the servary was it was clearly not initially identified. But it's, it's, I'm being told it's more than cosmetic. There's a component of it related to the soil. And I don't know if, if someone from Pepper or, or FGM, Josh, one of you want to do a better analysis or a better description of what's going on with that?
Sure. So the, the issue with the, with the servary is, is much like the issue with the soil condition underneath the existing South Cafeteria. Where it gets a little bit more complicated in the servary is approximately half of the servary is what we refer to as slab on grade. And then the other half, there's a basement underneath the servary. And it's at the, it's where those two meet that there's an issue in the, in the floor. So if you go into the servary right now, there's a, I mean, it's, it's essentially a tripping hazard where the, where that intersection occurs. So like, like Mike said, the servary is certainly more than just a, an aesthetic thing to, to mirror the work that's happening in creating a new South Cafeteria. There is, there is structural, there's structural work that needs to be remediated in, in that area.
Josh, if you could explain for me, to Jackie's point, her concern is that if we don't address this every now that it's going to cause problems down the road in terms of the structural integrity of the building is, is what I believe I heard her say. Can you speak to that? I mean, if we, if we start doing it, obviously we have to really fix it. But if we don't start doing it, what, what does that do to the, the building?
So, so from a, there isn't, there isn't necessarily a, what we would deem a life safety issue. But, but certainly when you have a floor condition which someone could, it could cause someone to trip. I mean, there's, there's a large crack opening in, in the floor. You, the, the, there's many options there. Certainly the complete renovation of the servary and fixing that is one. I, 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 I don't like to use the term Band-Aid, but at the other end of the spectrum, there, there is certainly something that could be done that would be more of a temporary fix, if you will.
Let us go back as a team and do an assessment of that, and, and we'll, we'll come back with a recommendation with respect to the servary. I think, I think I've got, I, I think what I would summarize what I heard, and I'll, I'll try it out, too, is that folks are saying that if it wasn't part of the initial project, we could probably live with it. If there's some foundational aspect of it that's really critical to be done now, and, and there's really no good answer other than doing it now, we'll come back with that. Is that fair?
So does anybody believe it's something different? Okay, thank you very much for the information.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
The next item is the third quarter variance report. This item is for discussion, information only, and it is in compliance with strategic plan, priority for operations, facilities and finance, board policy for colon ten and for colon twenty. And making this presentation is Ms. Cindy Sador, Chief School Business Official. Cindy?
Cindy, if you're talking, you're muted.
Sorry, my laptop's dying. I have to go plug it in. Are we on the variance report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So basically what we do on this variance report is we do a comparison. This is our third quarter one. We do this with revenues and expenditures. And then what we do is we see where we are today. We also compare to ourselves to last year and take a look to see if we're somewhere in line. If we're not in line, what we do is there's notes on the side. And we explain what the difference was between one year to the other. So basically, this is, this helps us, too, because it lets us know if we're on track or if we're off track. If, let's say we coded something to a wrong account. This will also help us where we can rectify it before we proceed forward. So right now, we, we seem to be on target with everything for the revenues. And Chris, can you go down, please? Because the other one is the expenditures. Thank you. And also the same here. We just make sure that we're in line. Again, we're putting notes off to the side so we can explain what is, what the differences may be to help anybody understand some of our variance reports. So does anybody have any questions?
Doesn't sound like it. Thank you so much, Cindy.
Thank you.
The next item or action items, so I now, I turn this over to the board president, Sarah Spivey.
Okay, so the first action item is move to, move to approve up to fifteen unused vacation days to be used by June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. And this is for all twelve month staff. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Somebody?
Second.
Thank you.
Minute, second, yeah.
Um, is there, Dr. Purt Adams, is somebody going to present? I'm wondering, do you want to ask questions?
Roxana, would you present the item, please?
So all of our twelve months employees must take vacation by November first following the year and which vacation is earned, except for CPA that have until September first. As you know, due to COVID nineteen, we've been under the stay at home order since mid-March. And so very few employees were able to take vacation just because, you know, you can't leave home. We anticipate that once the restrictions are released a little bit, and people only have until November or September first to use the vacation time that is unused, we might see a surge of vacation time taken. So to avoid that potential disruption to district operations, we're asking the board to approve use of fifteen, up to fifteen unused vacation days to be used by June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. That would allow supervisors an opportunity to spread out approvals of requests for vacation time.
Questions? Tom, I believe you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I just have a perspective that I want to offer. First of all, you know, saying that people are not, most are not able to use vacation, kind of in my mind implies that they, they couldn't, and it's, it's really a choice. You know, we're in a different world. And from my perspective, the purpose of vacation and why employees get vacation for your twelve month employees is that people need time to unplug and get away from their work and do something else. And that may look different today than, than it did. It may not mean you're not going to take a trip to go someplace. But I think the purpose of the vacation is to, is to encourage that. And for me to sit and say, you're going to not, you know, we're going to alter that, says that we don't believe that people should be still doing that. I think even with this, with the COVID situation, people need to, my signal is people need to, to take a day and not be focusing on their work. And that's what, that's what a vacation day is. So I'm, I am voting in opposition to this. I believe that people should be and take their vacation right through.
So could, could I comment on that, please? Many of the people in this room fall into that category. And we were thrust into COVID at a time when we could not take vacation. Some people have vacations planned for spring break. That was right when we hit COVID. And to, and most of these people are administrators and B and G. B and G does a lot of the cleaning and trying to do that. And I truly understand what you're saying about time to step away and refresh. But right now, that makes it difficult. For example, last week, many of the board, many members of the board asked us, what's the plan? What's the plan for moving forward? What would it look like? When can we get that out? And so because many of the people who are part of that decision-making process need to be at the table as we meet in order to bring something forward to the board in June. It does, it makes it difficult. I agree, people need a break, but it's been hard to take it.
Do the board members want to weigh in?
I guess I would, I'm actually along the lines of Tom. I think that people need to take the break. I, I think that rolling over all the days is just going to create, and it's just going to encourage us to be much shorter staffed early into next year. I'm not supportive of it.
Matt, Gina, Ralph, Jackie?
So I, I would ask, is there a, is it, I understand both ends of the issue here. I think I understand, at least I intellectually understand it. I don't know the, the, the work intensity that's gone on, because I have not had that personally. Okay, so I, I'm sensitive to that. And I also am concerned about the backend issues of how to manage this. And so I, I don't know if that can be addressed more fully in, in this conversation. Or if there's some, you know, intermediate compromise timeframe, that might be more metabolic. I just, I don't want to be, you know, because I'm leaning towards a yes, but, you know. So that's just what I'd say at this point.
So Sarah and Matt, you want to hear more about what it might look like next fall? We have a bunch of people taking time off at the same time?
Right, just kind of, and, you know, what, what are some of the unintended consequences that could come from this? Is this, you know, maybe that's already been thought through? Or we just, you know, maybe I've not laid my eyes on the explanation, and maybe that's on me, so.
One of the reasons, if I might, for spreading it out is so that you don't have a lot of people taking off at one time. Because supervisors do have the latitude to say, you know, we could only have X amount of people out. Can you look at a different time? I have the same concern if we now say, people have to take that vacation time between now and the start of school, that will we have everything that we need in order to start school, whichever way we start it? Whether it's in person, remote, or the hybrid? Will the building be sanitized in the means it needs to be? Will we have the PPEs we need to have? Will we have everything in place for our students? Will the PD be done that needs to happen over the summer to make sure that people are prepared? And because they have to take off. And so, because if we say you can't carry it over, just as you're concerned that over the course of next year, the entire school year, we may have a lot of people off. We run that same risk this summer with people saying, I can't carry my days over, so I'm going to take off.
And if I may add to this, it is already our procedure, and it's in the contracts that people have until November first. So what I anticipate will happen, there will be a waiting period over the summer because people don't know yet if it's safe. And then we will have a search in the fall of a lot of people trying to take vacation that they will, otherwise will not be able to utilize if it's past November first.
And, and based on the school calendar and how it works, it's, is there, is there any in between time between that and next June?
Well, that's what we were asking, to extend it to June. The policy currently says November first. And so that's our concern that we'll have a, an influx of people who feel that, okay, we're now in level four, level five of the reopening. It's, it's okay to travel. And then we have a vast majority of people wanting to take vacation by, before November first, so that they don't lose those days.
Yeah, I hear it. I appreciate it. I'm supportive of this. I, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm supportive of this, of course. I mean, I think honestly, the idea that we would, to me, it feels like, I, I mean, I, I trust that our, that our twelve month employees would know to not take all the same days off and not do anything that would upset the operation of the school and what's happening. And also, I can understand not being in a frame of mind to actually take a vacation when you have so many people resting on the decisions that you're making when things are changing so rapidly. So the idea of taking a day off, even to rejuvenate now, you're, I mean, the way the mind works, it's just not likely that a lot of rejuvenation would be happening at this point when you know that there are all these variables changing every single moment. So of course I support extending it.
Ralph or Jackie, did you want to weigh in, or do we feel comfortable calling a vote?
This is Ralph. You know, my, the small little think tank I run, I've literally pushed people to take some vacation time in the last few weeks because it's so important for them to take a break and get that mental health, even though they can't really go anywhere. I mean, one person drove down to Indiana, picked up some stuff at a farm, et cetera, et cetera, and drove back and, and, you know, said it was the best day that she's had in, in a month since COVID hit. That said, so Tom, I guess I agree with you philosophically on this, that it's important to take that mental break. But everybody's different, and, and if the administration thinks this is going to work better, they are closer to their own employees, they know what's going on here. I think Gina made some solid points on the capacity of people to actually relax during this very stressful time. So I, I'm, I am intending to, I will favor the administration's recommendation here and defer to the administration.
Are we ready to call a vote? Gal, could you call the rule, please?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Martyri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Dikowski?
No.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
Oh.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item. I move to approve the adoption of the included texts for school year 2020, 2021.
Second.
For, sorry, I just needed a new page. For a total of $19,726.
I'm sorry, I just was ahead of myself.
No, that's fine.
I seconded still, Sarah.
Thank you. If somebody's talking, we can't.
We can't hear you, Jalen.
I'm sorry. Making the presentation is Mr. Greg Johnson, Associate Superintendent. And this item is in compliance with strategic plan priority to transformative teaching and learning and board policy six colon 20. At the conclusion of the presentation, the administration recommends that the board approve the adoption of the included text for school year 2020, 2021, for a total of $19,726 and six cents.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I don't have any new addition to add than what's already in the memo here. And at this, this hour, I'll keep my comments very brief. I just want to just reiterate here a little bit that this is a much lower amount for our textbook adoptions, because of the fact that we are now coupling the textbook adoption process with our curriculum evaluation process, something that had not been the case in previous years. And as a result, until we get caught up with our curriculum process being ready to make full recommendations, it really is new courses or significantly changed courses because of new state regulations or something along those lines that would warrant, that, that warrant textbooks. And that's what we have with these two classes right there. So with that said, I'll open it up to comments.
Any questions or comments? Okay, Greg, I just want to say thank you. I think the curriculum review process is something we're all really excited about. So this is ultimately a very good thing. Gail, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Martyri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Dikowski?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Dixon Spivey? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, all right. I move to approve the settlement agreement for specialized instruction facility is discussed in closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
I don't believe, do we need further discussion? I don't believe so. Gail, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martyri?
No.
Mr. Baron?
I'm sorry, I just want to get clarification. What do we, what's, what is the item again?
We're moving to approve the settlement agreement for specialized instruction facility is discussed in closed session.
Yes.
And Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Dikowski?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Dixon Spivey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we do have one item, information item, which is a discussed discussion of issuance of death certificates, which we did at Cal. Um, do we have any future agenda items? All right.
Can we have a future agenda item to make the meeting not go till midnight?
Sure, I'm on it. Anything else that we feel like raising this evening? Or this early morning, as the case may be?
Yeah.
All right. Is there a?
I move to adjourn.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you guys have it. Thanks, guys. Good night.
Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Purt Adams.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Good night. Good morning.
All right. Hugo, you still there? Hugo?